Borges.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gamba.
Here.
Davis?
Ingram?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual or derivative in justice for all.
All right, the next item on the agenda is a public comment for items that are not on the agenda. If you are here to speak on an item that is on the agenda, you will have a chance to speak when that agenda item comes up. For those speaking now, we ask that you come up to the podium and give your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes and address your comments to the council. Council usually doesn't answer questions but may refer items to staff or a council member to follow up on. We also ask the audience to be respectful when others are speaking and refrain from clapping, cheering, or booing. Finally, out of respect for everyone's time, if you're speaking on the same issue as a prior speaker and you are not adding any new information, please consider limiting your remarks to simply "I agree with the prior speaker" or "I agree with John," etc. Thank you. Who would like to speak? Mr. Spencer.
Hi, how you doing?
Right here.
On top of this, all right, I'm going to be fairly brief, but I was receiving-
Mitch, I know you, but for the record, give your name and address.
Mitch Spencer, 1001 Midland Avenue.
Thanks.
All right, yeah, I'm here because I received an email about seven o'clock last night from Parks and Rec member, and he was concerned about the fact that he had somebody had sent out a blast email saying that there were going to be people here speaking in favor of the Veltus Park Bike Park. So I came here, so I came because he felt like if they were here there would need to be a voice on the other side, so that's why I'm here. And I just want to point out a couple of things. First of all, my wife and I are concerned about the amount of city property that is already dedicated to bike parks. We feel like these things should be clustered. They have a big footprint, they have a lot of impacts. I think all of us know that Veltus Park has traditionally been used for large group picnics, birthdays, weddings, reunions, about every class reunion we have from Glenwood Springs High School, volleyball games, club meetings, and memorial services. We're concerned about the fact that a large-scale bike park would change the, they'd change the general purpose of the park and take it in a new direction, similar to what we've seen with the Grand Staff Trail up on Red Mountain, which has impacted hikers and those of us that used to ride the trails going uphill. You know, I'm a biker but also a hiker, so I think sometimes these large features have impacts that need to be looked at and time needs to be taken on these. So, I don't know if anybody is here from Rick's group, but I was just here because of that. I also want to say that I'm a little concerned about the survey that the bike group put out. I took the survey, there was no question about whether you were in favor of it being a Veltus or not. It was just a matter of where you wanted the bike park, so I'm concerned about the fact that that wasn't part. I'm also wondering about if I do put a comment on there, since they are the people that are proponents of the park, whether those comments would be of any service to me. I'd rather see if there is such a survey, it be done by a neutral party, not the people that are in favor of the park. So with that, I don't know, like I said, I just wanted to say that I do think these things are better off clustered, that we don't need to impact multiple parks, that we have plenty of areas now where it could be where it would be clustered with other bike features. And I do feel like it's a fairly large scale and would change the, and would have an impact on the park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike McDill. I actually live at 1155 Elk Springs Drive, but I come into the city a lot. I'm a member of the Glenwood Kiwanis Club, so that means two things. One is we're strongly in favor of parks and we're strongly in favor of bicycles. And I do want to mention, to have a few comments on the BMX park, as I will call it. First, it's a great idea, you know, we look forward to even participating in that. I think it's, there's three things I wanted to put across. One is it's important that it be in a big enough area that it can expand, because I think it's going to be really popular and it's going to require more, you know, a large area that has space to expand in. Two, it needs to have good access from the bike trails, from the main bike trails, and so that kids from all over the city can get to it easily. And third, it needs to be someplace that has a lot of visibility. You know, we're going to have, a lot of parents are going to be sending their kids out there unsupervised, and we want it to be a good, open area where, you know, the kinds of activities that don't like the light of day won't be there. So if you take those three things into consideration, I think we'll have a project that will be quite an asset for the city. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Hi, my name is Brianna McCallum, or formerly known as Brianna Richardson. I live at 2641 Woodbury Drive here in Glenwood Springs. I'm here today because I'm concerned about the development of South Canyon, and I wanted to voice my concerns. I have a little more formal speech because I just got out of college, so I was in a public speaking class. So, here it goes. A, I wanted to recognize you guys, City Council. I understand you do this as a service, and I appreciate your hard work on every project and your due diligence on countless projects. However, I do think that the general public has not been sufficiently informed on a significant piece of land due to lack of standard and fair process. That being said, my father who's lived up there since the 1955 was found out by a phone call because somebody just happened to be at the City Council meeting. To me, that's not a fair and sufficient information for people. What I am familiar with in general proceedings of recommended city projects is public forums, input, abundance of drawings and models and data collecting, RFPs, and sometimes even a public vote. I have not seen much of this taken place. And this can take two to five years of a process. Just to give you an example, Seventh Street Block, which has been on the DDA agenda since 2015, has had significant public input, has had many studies, and has drawings, and has been redesigned multiple times for the needs and the wants of the community. And this final decision is going to turn out great because of that input. I feel like that the largest land, one of the most largest open spaces that the city owned, has not been given the same impact of community input as two blocks of the city have been. That, to me, is significant. So I wonder, why has two blocks been allowed so much time, fun, and resources and input while one of the largest open space properties of the city is going to be decided over a course of six months maybe, and a two-page lease? This is a little disappointing to me. South Canyon has clearly not been through the thorough steps, and I'm asking City Council to keep this consistent and effective due diligence intact. I'm asking you not to sign the lease that will tie up this land for generations and will not be looked at for the first time until my children are in high school. And I don't even have any children. That's how young I am. And it won't be looked at again until my grandchildren are graduating from high school. And it won't even be completed, I will most likely be in the cemetery. That's disappointing to me. So I'm asking you to slow down the process, do the standard steps so you can be assured that you made the right decision for the canyon, the residents, and the city, and that way also for generations to follow. So I hope you hear me out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Spraberry. I live at 619 West 11th Street. I'm here to speak on behalf of the bike park going up in Veltus, or possibly going up in Veltus. Just kind of here to support the local riders and stuff like that. I've been through the park, I've seen the mock-up of the lines. I heard his concerns with the park interfering with park functions and such things like that. The way the park is designed and laid out, I've seen some of the drawings and the plans for it. Technically wouldn't really interfere with any of the lower areas of the park. It would be all in the upper areas of the park, and then with the pump track over behind where the tennis courts are, and then the other area behind the parking lot on the other side of the park. I feel that the park would be a really good idea right there. And not necessarily like, I heard him say that it was bunched up and stuff like that, you know, and kind of, I felt like the park would be, I don't know, a good location there. It would make a very unique location for a bike park, setting it aside from all other locations. Like, you know, you got your Carbondale Park and stuff like that, and it's just like a sea of like wide-open dirt jumps and stuff. And it does look like a scar on the land. I think integrating a park like that through a treat area would be very unique. I think it would draw a lot of people. It would be a very awesome location, I feel, for a bike park, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Wendy Cooper. I live with him at 619 West 11th. I just want to say a couple of things, kind of from a different standpoint. We have two teenagers that both go to Anthem Mount High School. We hear a lot of, sorry, I'm getting motion, a lot of teenagers. There's a lot of kids that congregate in those oak brush. Because it's undeveloped, it's really hidden, they can do whatever they want. There's a lot of vagrants to kind of accumulate there, sorry. A lot of trash buildup. I think that having a park like this is going to give that area purpose. It's going to keep a lot of those teenagers out of there, a lot of the vagrants. You know, people are going to be there maintaining the area. And I think, and we walk through there every day with our dogs, it will be a good thing, you know, because all it is is scrub up and hills and trash. It's kind of, sort of a dangerous area right now. And that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Michaela Richardson. I'm a resident of 3135 County Road 134, and as much of you know that, it is South Canyon. I'm here tonight to express my concern for the proposed development of South Canyon. I've been out of the country for the past year, and I've kept up to date by watching City Council meetings online, as well as reading Post-Independent online as well. And so I'm happy to finally express my concern. So as a resident of South Canyon, and not only that, but as a young citizen of Glenwood Springs, who will be impacted the most by the decisions that are made in the near future, I would love to promote and encourage responsible use of South Canyon. This canyon is a fragile place. It has multiple ecosystems, as well as it's a breeding place, a mating place, excuse, breeding and migrating place for many species. Not only this, but South Canyon is home to important history that should be respected and protected. That being said, I highly encourage any changes within this canyon to be of low impact with a soft footprint. The recently proposed development of South Canyon will bring irreversible consequences to the canyon's ecosystems and wildlife. And as my sister said previously, I feel like these have not been studied or even looked at quite yet. But I study environmental science, and I understand that this type of development will bring negative impacts such as increased fire danger, which is already a huge risk in South Canyon. It will also cause disturbance and displacement of wildlife due to habitat destruction and fragmentation, as well as increased traffic overall in the canyon. This does not provide a long-term solution for the canyon. As a young citizen, this concerns me, because I want this pure place to still be there for my children and grandchildren as it is for me today. I think that the decisions made for this canyon should be highly considered, should highly consider what the young generation hopes to see and not be monopolized by one developer, because ultimately, it's generations such as my own who will be impacted the most. And I believe that with today's world, all these open spaces are disappearing at a rapid rate, and they should be protected for future generations. This being said, there are issues up South Canyon. There are citizens such as myself, my family, the Roaring Fork Mountain Biking Club, who had a cleanup yesterday. There are citizens and people who are trying their best to make South Canyon be what it can be. So thank you so much for your time, and I hope you consider my concerns.
Thanks, Michaela.
Thank you, Michaela.
Hello, my name is Noah Davis. I live at 806 Garfield Avenue. I'm here today because of the proposal of the bike park going in at Sarah Park, and I've been involved through the whole entire thing. I've been to all the meetings, I've helped Rick at the booths, I've helped him through the whole entire thing. I think it'd be a great way to get kids out and teenagers out to do things, especially kids my age would love to go there and just hang out with their friends and play around on the jumps and stuff. And I think it would just be good for family, and it would be, get people off their screens more, and I think it would just be a great idea.
Thanks, Noah.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak to us? Ma'am.
First of all, thank you very much for your service and for listening to my comments. My name is Cheryl Dahl, and I live at 2562 Woodbury Drive in Glenwood Springs. I'm also the president of the Glenwood Springs Kiwanis Club. And as you know, the Kiwanis Club is very supportive of biking and bike safety in this community, with the donation of bike racks and bike lights and free helmets at safety fairs. We do support the idea of an additional bike attraction in Glenwood Springs. However, we do not support the location of this proposed BMX terrain in and around Veltus Park. As you also know, this park was conceived and built by the Kiwanis Club in the mid-1940s as a family-oriented park for family gatherings, cookouts, picnics, and a small playground area for children, five to 12. Even though Veltus is now a city park, the Kiwanis Club has had a continuous history of use and maintenance support of the facilities in the park. Our club meets every Tuesday in Veltus, Tuesday evening, in the summer months, mid-May through the end of September. We see firsthand how much this park is utilized by families, from the playground equipment to the picnic shelters. It is a beloved park in a quiet and serene location next to the river. Having high-energy biking courses surrounding this quiet location will destroy the atmosphere of the park. Also, there is limited parking, and there is a narrow curving road that is dangerous to cars and bicyclists. There are plenty of other locations, such as the land below and west of the high school, and the Wolfshorn area behind the community center, that are more appropriate for a BMX terrain park. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Mr. Merritt.
Yes, my name is David Merritt. I live at 1504 Mountain Drive. And as a Lions Club member, I echo the concerns of my fellow service club members, the Kiwanians. This is a very unique park, or you can't say very unique, it is a unique park within Glenwood Springs. It is walkable from a large concentration of the population, and it has a quietness to it because of the vegetation that's around it and its proximity to the river. It is, and has been for a long time, a great place for picnics, for family gatherings, and for that sort of thing. I would hate to see we start to tear up the vegetation that we have through there and create even more intensive use. I'm not sure that it can tolerate a much more intensive use. So as this, you know, project is discussed further, I'd like to really be very concerned over it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave. Anyone else?
I just walked through a rainstorm to get here, so I'm kind of wet here. But my name is Ruth Sears. I live on 813 Palmer. And I would just like to bring up my viewpoint about South Canyon also. I've walked that place for 10 years now, and it's just an absolutely big gift for the city. And I would just hate to see it taken away and developed in a manner that would only satisfy a small group. It's so stunning that Box Canyon should be, it's a treasure. It's so beautiful. And there's so many animals there, and to have that turned into a campground, to me, is just almost criminal. And I can't even begin to tell you how beautiful that place is. And like I say, I've walked there three times a week for 10 years, and I'm in love with that place. And to see it developed, to me, is just not fair. I think that Glenwood should be shown what a beautiful gift that is. It's a city park, and it's magnificent with a river and beaver and elk and deer and bear and coyotes, and it's just stunningly beautiful. And maybe there's another use. Hopefully, development doesn't have to be part of it. And I would like us to maybe go that way. There's a CMC class on sustainability. Maybe they could take part of that project because there are invasive species there with the thistle, and there are some plants that don't belong there. Maybe instead of like learning from a book, they can actually get out in nature and learn from these 2,000 acres that we have gifted to this city. So I think of all the councils ahead of us, down the road, future, past. And the past councils really went far out of their way to get land, to have a good lifestyle for the city. And I think that it would be really in our interest to hold on to that piece of property and to make it available for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to us? All right, seeing none, I will close the, that agenda item, and next item is agenda changes. I would like to announce that item 14D has been removed from the consent agenda and will be considered at the next council meeting. And at this point, I would open it up for any council comments. Shelley?
I would just like to say, I think I'm on, that I very much appreciate public comment. I appreciate, you know, so often we're sitting up here and there's no one except staff and the audience, and, you know, I appreciate the public that comes forward to be part of our city government. And it's important to hear from everyone. Speaking to South Canyon, you know, we have talked about up on this council of doing a master planning process for that canyon. We've also had some discussions internally of doing a biodiversity study this summer, where we've been talking to the CSU extension. So, you know, I'd like us to make a formal commitment to doing that at some point. I don't know if we want to have a work session or something along those lines. That, that would be perfect, yeah. And I know that Parks and Rec Commission is looking at the Veltus Park and the BMX concept, and will probably bring us a recommendation on that. So there will be more formal discussion on that before a decision is made. But thank you for coming and speaking to your council. It's an important part of our government.
I missed that one. Thank you, Shelley. And I agree with everything you just said there. And what was the, South Canyon, you said you were going to bring something back to us?
There is a proposal to kind of look at diversity out there.
Okay.
To do a study out there.
Okay, okay. I mean, that's, I'll make a quick comment. That's one thing that I did, do agree with the folks that have been showing up with, for South Canyon. That, I would expect that to slow way, way, way down. I mean, that, that is an area that's, I mean, it's our largest city park. I mean, it deserves a lot of study, a lot of attention, a lot of thought before anything just gets, you know, approved out there and say, let's go. I mean, it's just too, it's too important. There's way too many issues to move on that thing quickly. So as far as I'm concerned, that whole thing needs to take a big, 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 deep breath, and let's look at that real seriously before we go put anything out there.
Thank you.
Any other council comments? All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, except item 14D.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
A motion by Shelley and a second by Jonathan to approve the consent agenda. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we're up to South Midland SGM consultant change order request.
Good evening, council. I'm going to let Mike get set up here. Mike Fowler from SGM is going to do a little quick presentation on the change order request itself, and we'll answer questions.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, council. So we're back again talking about South Midland. Hopefully, this, this presentation is shorter than, than two weeks ago. But Matt asked me to put together just a, a brief presentation to go over the differences between the base project, which was on the consent agenda, and this other bid alternate concept that we discussed two weeks ago. We've looked at that a little bit more, and just, and this, this presentation will be short. I think we have five slides, and most of them are all pictures, so we'll try to keep this, we'll try to keep this brief. But the first slide is just, is the base project that we, that we've been talking about. It's the same one you've seen a number of times now. Total width on this project, on this, on this section's 46 feet. We have downhill wall, uphill wall. We have a sidewalk with an outboard mount, pedestrian railing, and a guardrail between the sidewalk and the roadway. But yeah, the, I would point out, you know, in this base project typical section, the downhill wall, the sidewalk, and the guardrail, and where the guardrail is located. We went through a bunch of phasing scenarios last time, probably, probably bored you guys to death on how, how these could be built. But this is, this is the, the phasing scheme that we came up with for the base project. Again, it's similar to everything we talked about last week. Try to build the uphill wall, then move traffic over, build the downhill wall, and then start filling in between. You'll see here that we're considering five phases for this, for this typical section. Then, two weeks ago, we started talking about this bid alternate concept, and at that time, we called it option 3C. If you remember, we looked at, we had a couple of other options where we're trying to, to construct the, the full roadway width with two lanes of traffic during construction. And the other two options did not include a sidewalk. The one that we showed you a couple of weeks ago, option 3C did include a sidewalk, but in that option, it was four and a half feet wide. And one of the things we heard two weeks ago was that six foot is really the desired width on that sidewalk. So we've revised that 3C option to show the six-foot sidewalk. And again, the, you know, what, what I want to point out in this option versus the base option that we just looked at, is the sidewalk is attached, and the guardrail is on the downhill side of the sidewalk. So, you know, this, this is really similar to most of the rest of Midland, north of 27th Street. So if you can picture that, you know, there's a lot of similarities there. This sidewalk's a little bit wider. I think everything north of 27th Street, I shouldn't say everything, but most everything is five-foot sidewalk there. I think when the sidewalk kind of pulls away from Midland around Skunk Hollow, it does get a little bit wider through there. But in general, it's five feet. And the other thing to notice here is this, this option, what we're looking at is trying to push the roadway towards the hill. So, you know, one of the things that we heard from the contractors, from other folks, is trying to build on that downhill side, build that downhill wall is just going to be really challenging. And so whatever we can do to avoid that or minimize that would be, would be good. So this option is pushing everything closer into the hill, a little bit narrower catchment area at the end. And the retaining wall on the uphill side, the soil nail wall, you push the road closer to the hill, into the hill, the wall gets taller. This option does not show a downhill wall, but I don't think we can eliminate all the downhill walls, particularly in that stretch around the Haycock property. It's just, it's just a, it's a pinch point, and it's really steep downhill. Exactly, yeah.
And there's no need for that at that point. So I'm assuming you could probably put curb and gutter within a foot or two of that existing wall on the uphill side if, if that was going to remain or whatever wall is going to be there in a, in a future design.
Yeah, exactly. And, and, you know, this, it's kind of hard to convey, you know, what, what's going to happen, that whole stretch. And this is just one, kind of one snapshot here. In the plans, we actually have, you know, multiple typical sections depending on where you're at. But this is probably, this is pretty representative of that stretch from, I would say, from Hager to the north end of the Haycock property. And where that red, red rock wall is right now, that, that is our pinch point. And there, there will still be an uphill wall there just to retain their, you know, their, their yard there. But you're right, there won't be a catchment area. There'll be curb and gutter retaining wall through there.
Mike?
Yes?
You said the, the uphill wall, the retaining wall gets taller?
It, it will, yeah.
Significantly, or is it?
You know, that, that's, it's hard to, it's hard to answer right now without having kind of go, having, without being able to go through and, you know, run a new alignment and cut new sections and look at new surfaces.
Right.
You know, I think there's a, I think there's a limit to how tall we, we want to go with that from a constructability standpoint. You know, 12 to 15 feet kind of seems like the, the upper end of that, that practical limit. Now, we could go taller. You know, the, the base option, I think the maximum wall height was about eight feet. This option, you know, we're probably pushing 12, maybe 15 and a few points because these walls, you know, if you, if you drive down the road and you see kind of how the cut slope is, you know, if you're driving down, you'll see it, the wall will start, it'll be fairly short, then it's going to get taller. It's going to kind of look like a bell curve.
Okay.
And so maybe at the top of that bell curve, you know, I might be pushing 15 feet. But, you know, we've also talked to some, some soil nail contractors and, you know, that's, that's well within, you know, the practical constructability limits. You know, it's not going to be, they're not going to have to do something out of the ordinary to build, to build the 15 foot tall wall. In general, I think we'd like to, we'd like to limit it to 12 feet. That's kind of our, that's, that's my target.
Okay.
Because the other thing too, I mean, 15 foot tall wall, I mean, that's, that's going to be, it's going to be pretty, pretty visible.
Right. Without a step back or anything?
Correct, yeah.
It was just straight?
Yeah.
So the wall aside, the rock fall mesh, would that be of a consistent height? Maybe not.
I think it will be a fairly consistent height. You know, we, we'll have to do a, a rock fall analysis to determine energies and bounce heights and potential paths that the rocks can, can come down to, to, to get that height. But, yeah, I, you know, on rock fall fences and barriers and attenuators, you don't typically see the, you know, the, the profile of the fence changing. It's, it's usually you pick the maximum height that you need and make the fence the, that height consistently.
I'm, I'm sorry, Brick. You, I was thinking you were asking about the height of the wall itself. You're, you're asking about the height of the, just the rock fall supporter. I see. I thought you were asking about the height of the wall. I misunderstood your question.
And again, we, you know, we went through, went through the steps to see how this could be built in, in concept here. Similar phasing scenario. I guess the one thing I would point out in phase one, you know, it looks like we have, and it's hard, I apologize if it's hard to read, but this work area in phase one, it looks like we can squeeze out a little bit more work area, about 18 feet. And, you know, when you're dealing with soil nail construction, every foot that you can get is valuable to the, to the contractor. The base option, I think, considered 14 feet. So, so we're, we're able to get a little bit more room in this option, which is, you know, that's, that's a, that'll help the, the contractor, just should speed up their production, make it easier to work in there. And they'll probably need it too because the wall will be a little bit taller. But this has four separate phases. Again, build into the hill, switch traffic over. In this case, we're, we're, we're considering building in the middle before we go to the downhill side on, on phase three, and then filling in with the curb and gutter and finishing the soil nail wall in phase four. Just some comparisons between the base project and the bid alternate. They're essentially the same total cross section width, three foot difference between the two. The base project has a little bit narrower, it looks like it may have a little narrower phase one work area, 14 foot versus 18 foot. Uphill soil nail walls, so on the base project, you know, we were trying to, we were trying to balance the wall heights, not so much the wall areas, but really the wall heights be, between uphill and downhill in the base, in the base project. So we were really trying to, you know, we could keep the maximum wall heights uphill and downhill about eight feet for that base project. You see the, the, the square foot areas there for the uphill and downhill. So on the bid alternate, the uphill wall almost doubles in area. The downhill wall is about a third. So we're, you know, there's a, there's a significant reduction in the downhill wall. And like I mentioned earlier, we could probably eliminate most of the downhill wall except for that area in the, in the Haycock property stretch. The two, the two projects have, you know, similar rock catchment areas that we can put stormwater, some utilities in, you know, that we have 10 foot in the base project and eight foot in the bid alternate. I'd say the biggest difference between the two is this next bullet point, the three foot buffer zone for the base project, no buffer zone in the other project. So, you know, to me, that's probably the biggest differentiator between the two is attached sidewalk versus detached. We can get six foot sidewalks on both of them. Base project has pedestrian railing on that downhill side, pretty much the whole length, about 3,000 feet. We're estimating the pedestrian railing will only be required for about half of that on the bid alternate. We looked at the cost estimates last time. The base project, we were estimating nine to nine and a half million. Based on adding some quantities, taking some quantities out, we think that the, the bid alternate will be construction savings in the neighborhood of 400,000 based on the quantities and the unit prices that we used for all the cost estimates. And then, as we're here to discuss tonight, that would require that design change order, which I believe was about 165,000. So, you know, in the end, you know, is it a net savings of that difference between 400 for the construction and 165 for the, for the design? I think it'll be somewhere in that ballpark.
So to continue on with that, we don't have any slides for this, but there is additional information, obviously, in the staff report about change order number, this is change order number three, I believe, for the 165,000. And change order number four pertains to the development of the individual bids for each one of the intersections. The actual development of the bid changes is fairly small. It's $6,000 to $8,000 to break one, each one of those out for the bids. But SGM is only at 30%. We, we released them to get the 30% on the intersections. They've, they've hit that point at this point. So they would actually have to take those intersections design to 100% with the rest of the project. So that's really where the bulk of that $47,000 is, is taking Three Mile, Hager, all of those intersections and bringing to a bid level set and then breaking those out into individual line items or bid tabs for the project itself. So I didn't want you to think they were charging $47,000 to just break out a couple of line items for that. That's actually a very small portion of it. It's more of moving through the design process, you know, Three Mile's got irrigation ditches across it, those kinds of things that need to be taken care of in final design, and then moving those into bid tabs. So that is kind of, it's almost a separate conversation if you guys want to go with the base option, which we did on the consent agenda, but you do want those individual ones to move forward, that's kind of a cost that we'll be incurring. The 165 is a discussion between yourselves if, if you want to move forward with that secondary design itself.
Could I ask that you please provide us with this PowerPoint presentation? I had this discussion with Deborah earlier today, but we would request on any future presentations that all information, including PowerPoint presentations, be included in our packet in advance so that we have time to review it, so we're not provided information and then two minutes later, we got to make a decision on it. All right, so questions for insolvent or discussions, whatever? It's your pleasure.
Well, maybe I'll ask a question just to make sure I understood. If I sort of cut through it all, we would save about 250,000 on the alternate net and the trade off, what, what we lose on the alternate, for the most part, is the, the guardrail, the, the offset from the, the street with the guardrail between the street and the sidewalk was a probably, that's what I took as sort of the two big trade offs there.
Yeah, I, I.
Is that a fair way to?
Yeah, I think as, as this project's kind of evolved, I think we're starting to converge to really, you know, to, to a design that has a lot of similarities between the base project and what we're talking about with these other, these other options. And in my mind, you know, the, the sidewalk, the configuration, the guardrail, the buffer zone, the railing, that's really the, that's kind of the key differentiator there. I think even in the base project option, we're going to look to, to make some tweaks to the, to the alignment and try to reduce some of those downhill wall locations.
But, you know, sort of traffic safety or design or whatever background is, having the, the sidewalk separated from the street with a guardrail is, is, how much of a safety issue is that? Is that sort of considered a standard expected practice for safety purposes? Or was it just sort of the way it was designed the first time and it really wouldn't make a difference if, if, if the guardrail was a, as it's shown in the alternative design?
Yeah, you know, there's, there's probably arguments you can make either way, whether or not the guardrail is desirable between the sidewalk and the roadway or, or not. You know, I think from a pedestrian perception, they probably like having that guardrail there. It makes them feel safer to have that separation. From a design standpoint, from a code standpoint, it's not required at that design speed. You know, we're talking a 25 mile per hour road and I have to, I have to look back, don't, don't hold me to this, but it's either 35 or 45 miles per hour is when, that's when you have to have a, a traffic barrier between the pedestrian path and the, and the roadway. So it's not technically required, but I think it was considered desirable to have that separation there.
Thank you.
Can I expand upon that just a tiny little bit? You know, we kind of looked at it initially that, you know, if you have a five foot pathway, and this isn't completely true on from 27th to H Street, or a six foot pathway, if you have the guardrail, but on the outside, you have a literally a fall, you have to jump over a handrail and you're going to go down a hill, you know, that's what we were considering. So if you have an escape route, if a car is coming your way on most of 20 or at Midland, you kind of have either a chain link fence or something you can go over to. But, you know, this is kind of a pinch point. So we thought it might be a good bonus, maybe not code required, but a good bonus for the, the comfort of people utilizing that path, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thanks, Matt.
So I kind of get the sidewalk idea, but talk to me a little bit about the difference between the sacrifices between eight foot and 10 foot catchment zone. I'm not quite clear on how mu, how much value is in 24 inches of catchment zone.
So I guess that would depend on a yearly basis. You know, if we get a ton of snow, we'll push a lot of snow that direction. If we fill it up because we have eight feet instead of 10 feet, we'll come back and haul some off. You know, to become a maintenance thing, can we get a skidster, a small backhoe in there to clean either one of those out? Yes. So both of them are viable and it will depend on the weather season on how often they have to be cleaned out if we have snow storage. This year, it would make no difference if we had eight feet or 10 feet. You know, if we get 250 inches of snow, it may be some extra work for the crews to come back and have to plane something off or even bring the, the blade in and run it a little higher and push it a little farther back. So, you know, I, I think that public works wise, street wise, we're actually okay with eight or 10 feet.
From an access EMS standpoint of, you know, either a, a car getting pulled over, is there any value in that catchment zone as, I guess not an alternative lane of travel, but, you know, I, I know when I get pulled over on Midland where I have to pull off to allow the police officer to pull me over. But, but I'm thinking of fire trucks and things and people being able to pull out of the flow of traffic. Is that, is 10, I mean, obviously 10 foot's more desirable than eight and 12 is more desirable than 10. But is that where the original 10 came from or anything to that effect?
I.
The 10 foot from the, with the stormwater, we were trying to keep the 100 year flow from the off sites in the catchment area. You know, with a 10% slope away from it from the 10 feet, Ashley and Dave have gone and said, this is a 100 year storm. It will stay within this catchment area. Now, it may not stay within that catchment area, but how often is Mr. Gamble, tell you, does a 100 year storm event occur? So, yeah, exactly, 1%.
I know.
So I wouldn't want to push that one way or the other based on those kinds of small minute things, I guess.
And I think the other thing, the difference between eight foot and 10 foot, it may affect where we end up putting the, the new light fixtures or the new streetlights. You know, we were planning on putting new streetlights in that 10 foot zone. So we, you know, we felt like we had enough room in that 10 foot area for streetlights, for storm sewer, and maybe for some, some other utilities. So we go to eight feet, we're, you know, we may have to look at other locations for the streetlights. Or those are going to be pinch points for, for maintenance.
Can I ask a, a really dumb question? Why do we need streetlights on that road?
Well, they're, they're out there right now, so I guess.
Obviously, if we're going to add the pedestrian facility out there, it'd be nice to have streetlights just for them to be able to utilize and feel safe with what they're traveling on also.
Okay.
You know, and right now, that catchment area feels a little more pinched than maybe it even needs to because we are required to put, not required, but we have put out two foot wide barricades in many areas, which pinches that catchment area down. If we have the rock catchment and the controlling of those rocks, we're not going to shoot out into the road, then those barricades become a kind of a moot thing and it opens up that area a little bit more for us to work in.
Shelley?
I'm just curious on the two options, is all the, are all the drainage features the same? Stormwater catchment, is there, there's, I think, drainage collection that goes under the road and that kind of thing? Is that all?
Yeah, they would, they would be, if not the same, very similar. Like Matt said, you know, the, the 100 year storm drainage calculations were based on that wider, wider catchment area. So if we reduce that, you know, we may, some of that may spill into the, into the road. How much that spreads, you know, I, I can't tell you that until we run through those calc's. But, but essentially, you know, they, they would still, both options would still have inlets to try to capture some of that, try to capture the runoff that's coming down the hill. It, you know, those.
And then are there culverts?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. And so both options, yeah, that was something we talked about quite a bit a couple of weeks ago between some of those options, you know, option 3B and 3C only had, or 3A and 3B only had curb and gutter on one side and, and nothing on the other. Yeah, both of these options have curb and gutter and inlets on, on both sides.
Okay. And then where?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, and so both options, yeah, that was something we talked about quite a bit. Um, a couple of weeks ago between some of those options, you know, option three B and three C only had, or three A and three B only had curb and gutter on one side and-
Right.
And nothing on the other. Yeah, both of these options have curb and gutter and inlets on, on both sides.
And then where um, typically, snow plowing on the road, are we, do we push it to the sides?
Surely, right now, we do the best we can to push it to the sides. Sometimes it's to the sides and then in between the barricades, um, where they're open. So, in this particular case, we'll be able to travel at a decent speed and throw it um, over the curb like you on the normal, normal push.
So, that, that comes into play on the sidewalk when the sidewalk is, you know, right on the curb versus having that buffer a lot of times. You know, I don't know if anybody's ever walked down Grand Avenue when they're plowing snow or when it's raining and the gutter has water in it, but if that sidewalk is right next to the roadway, you get splashed or you get hit, you know, the, the snow plowing can push the snow right onto the sidewalk. So, that's a, that's a pretty big advantage and part of the purpose of that buffer is just to give the pedestrian, you know, that, that safer feeling of not being right next to the cars, but also protection from splashing and water and snow and things like that when the weather's not perfect, but you're still out there walking, so. So, so bottom line, cost-wise, your estimate on, is that we might spend hundred and sixty-five thousand on design to save four hundred thousand. You're estimating.
And I think that Merrick Gammel pointed out last time that, you know, depending on which contractor you get, I mean, some contractors may see the downhill walls as a hindrance and they upcharge that. Some contractors may see the uphill wall as a hindrance and they may upcharge that. So, it's really gonna depend on who's bidding it, how they're bidding it. You know, we're trying to use equal, equal numbers all the way through this whole entire thing and just say, if everybody bids it the way we think they're going to bid it, you know, these are the differences between the two. So, could that be four hundred, be more, possibly? Could it be less, possibly? But that was kind of the point, I think, of this whole procedure was to get all the designs out there and say, okay, what do you guys think contractor-wise, how much is this gonna cost?
Okay, great.
And, and on the design, I mean, what we've, the way we've approached the design for that bid alternate is, is really the same way we've approached the base project where, you know, we're, we're starting, you know, we've, we're not starting totally from scratch because, you know, we have a lot of the, we have the survey done, we have the geotech done, you know, we have a lot of those thi- and we have this, yeah, we, we have a lot of those items done, but in reality, it's, this is two-thirds of the length of the project and it's, it's really a, it's a separate design. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a different-
Separate drawings.
It's a different set of, separate set of drawings, it's a separate alignment, it's, you know, separate profile, it's new surfaces, it's new, I mean, i- it's, it's pretty much a complete design.
A complete and separate set.
Yeah, yeah. A- and we've, we've approached it the same, with the same, in the same order that we looked at the original. So, we, you know, we're proposing to take it to thirty percent, give everyone a chance to review it, put a cost estimate together at thirty percent, then get it to sixty percent, put a cost estimate together, follow the same steps that were outlined in the original scope of work. So, you know, the first step would be to get the bid alternate to thirty percent, which will get us to the same level that we're at right now with the base project. Compare those two side by side, advance both of them to sixty percent, compare the costs side by side, get them both to ninety percent, review that and then put them out to bid as, and, and how they go out to bid, you know, that's, that's a little up in the air at this point. But, you're essentially doing two separate designs.
And since it is kind of an odd case for how we'd be bidding it and how the intersections would be broken out, we probably would sit down with contractors again and get a little bit of input from them. What is the, the easiest way we can put this together as a package so that you understand each piece and part of it that makes it simpler for them to bid? You know, if it's a really complicated bid and they have to work at it hard, you might get a little extra fluff thrown on it. So, we're, we're gonna try to do as much due diligence on it as humanly possible to make sure that it's a, it's a simple process for everybody to go with.
Okay, thanks, great.
Todd?
So, I'm gonna do my best to kinda read what's going on up here and my best guess is, is that it, it might be a bad idea to risk a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars over a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar possible savings, that depends on whether or not we accept the alternate bid as opposed to the base project. Is that correct? Did I just say that right? Well, that's kind of the, the choice up here tonight is we take a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar risk to design them both or we just say, you know what, let's go with the base project, let's forget about this alternate bid and go build the thing.
Can I, can I, can I, can I ask one question real quick?
Yeah, no, 'cause I'm trying to make sure I have clarity on this.
That's, that's kind of what I think, but let me-
Am I reading this wrong?
Well, let me ask a question. So, if, if it's a total new set of designs, sorry to hijack your-
No, no, go for it.
If, if, if it's a whole new set of designs, new plans, new everything, we take the base design out to bid this fall and we get numbers that are like, whoa, that just, we're puckered, we can't do that. Is it the same hundred and sixty-four thousand in October that it is now in May? If we want to have a, a, that three C option?
So, you're saying move the base option to bid level, break out the intersections, assuming that that change order kinda number was-
I don't know about the bid intersections, that, that, let's, let's put that-
So, I guess move that one, bid it out, see what the numbers come back as, and if it's too high, then go back and then move the base.
Would it be the same hundred and sixty-four thousand in the fall as it is today and if not, why not?
Yeah, like I, like I, like I just said, I mean, they're two separate designs really and how far we take the base option, I think, I don't, I don't see that really having much effect one way or the other. You're kinda starting, you're kinda starting over again.
I'm saying as we're starting over now, over again-
Right.
With this second op- secondary option, or in six months from now, we'd still be starting over?
Right.
Okay.
Still the same fee, you would change the fee?
So, it's-
Wouldn't, wouldn't there be additional fees though for, um, I mean, there's some, certainly some, some cost savings by, by running them simultaneously, um, I would think. And in terms of even just putting the bid out, it would be one set of, of uh, you know, bid documents rather than a complete separate set of bid documents that you would be then doing subsequently. One bid process, one set of bid meetings, you know? So, there would, without question, there would be savings to do, to do this now.
Yeah, no, you're, you're, you're right, Mike. I, I, if you, if, I don't know if you, if you had a chance to look at the, uh, the breakdown in cost, but there, there definitely are some items in there, like the project management phase, for example. We didn't really have any additional project management costs to do this, this bid alternate. I mean, we, we showed a couple of additional meetings in there, but my thought was, you know, I'm gonna still be managing the same project, it's just, it's just gotten a little bigger. So, that would be one cost that, you know, if we have to restart that, then yeah. Now, we're kinda restarting on the project management side too. Um, and you're right, during the bid phase, you know, we're going to the sa- it's the same bid meeting. You're right, absolutely.
And I would think time.
Yeah.
We don't lose six months worth of time, which may not be a big deal, but could have consequences.
Can you, can you explain that?
I mean, if we wait and we bid it in October and we hate the numbers and then we come back and do this-
We tell them the design, we got another six months to, for them to prepare the design?
Yeah, that, that normally doesn't work out well if you have to reject the bids and start, start over.
What is your anticipated timeframe for completion? If, if we go forward with this change order, when would you have both projects, you know, both alternates, um, ready to bid?
Realistically, we're shooting for the end of this year, so at December.
You like December?
But, alright, and again, I don't, I know Rick, your likes, even, but if you don't mind just, or, your estimate though is down to a, a possible savings of two hundred and fifty grand, that's what you're estimating, right, between the base project and the alternate project, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Great, Rick.
Well, and uh, the buffer zone on the sidewalk is, seems to me to be a fundamental safety issue. It isn't like there's a bunch of other sidewalks out there that you could use and so you're probably gonna be piling onto this one. And I guess maybe my question's to Carl, um, is there sort of a downside uh, in terms of the city's liability for uh, either bid in terms of safety in the sidewalk?
No, I think you wouldn't have them presented to you if they didn't meet minimum safety standards. It's just a question of, of kind of which approach. So, I'm, I'm fine either way you guys go.
To put it in perspective, we, we have the sidewalk along Midland Avenue between Eighth and Twenty-seventh, um, and it is attached for ninety-eight percent of that stretch. And I, I wish Chief Wilson was here. To my knowledge, no pedestrian has ever been, been hurt on that sidewalk by a vehicle going up on the sidewalk. And we have, A, more pedestrians on that stretch and B, more vehicle trips on that stretch than we do on this stretch down here. So, we've, we've obviously seen it work. Um, we have a similar situation on Donegan Road for that matter. Um, Donegan Road has a sidewalk attached to the road, um, Grand Avenue for that matter. I, I know that on downtown, we have cars parked along, uh, along the sidewalk, but as you, as you get out south and, you know, south part of town, there's big portions of sidewalk there that again are attached directly to the, to the street. Um, and uh, um, I don't know how many times it may have happened, but, you know, I've, you know, lived here pretty much fifty-four years and I, I'm not aware of anyone who's ever been hit by, on a, while they're walking down the sidewalk on Grand Avenue and, and they've been hit by a car jumping the curb, so. I don't, I don't think that that's a, a uh-
It's a big consideration.
Yeah, real, real significant concern. Shelley?
Can I jump in real quick, just for note that, just for consideration, those are also all tall, twenty-five mile an hour zone roadways. So, they're not required to have that guardrail between the pedestrians. So, if they bumped up, you know, they consider the curb and gutter to be a bump slash guardrail in essence, partially for lower speeds. So, you know, it's not, once again, it's not concerning to Carl 'cause it is not a code required.
Right, and, and I think it's, it's more of a perception, it's more of a, a user experience, I think, from the pedestrian side or biking. And we did hear, I know, um, Counselor Davis even spoke, you know, he lives along that Eighth to Twenty-seventh stretch and, and spoke to the, to the um, fact that sometimes walking along that five-foot sidewalk, it just feels too narrow, you know, and, and I think we had someone from the audience say too that if you're, if you're walking along there or you're riding your bike and you need to pass a pedestrian, you know, when you have that situation, a five-foot sidewalk can be a little bit narrow for that. And, and, you know, my feeling with, with all the residences and the elementary school and the neighborhoods that are along this stretch of South Midland, this is going to be a heavily used sidewalk. So, I, I think um, for the trade-off of, you know, a five, less than five percent savings on the project or in that range, um, and the consideration of the, the higher retaining walls on the uphill side and the, the narrower catchment area, just, I don't know if I see the advantages that are worthwhile in this alternate design. And I'm wondering, you know, if we go through the base project design, let's say we carry both of them forward and we spend that extra hundred and sixty-five thousand, if we get bids back that are way off the charts, we're gonna, we're gonna be into doing some value engineering anyway. If we go with just the base project and save the one sixty-five, are we, you know, 'cause when I, when I proposed this two weeks ago, I was thinking, oh, it might cost twenty-five grand extra or something. The one sixty-five is a little bit of a different conversation. And, you know, to me, they're, they're similar enough that if we get bids that are off the charts, we're gonna be value engineering anyway, so we're gonna be doing some changes in design at that point anyway. So, um, it's just my, my thoughts.
There you go.
No more questions at this point.
Do we need to open this up to the public?
Yes.
Do we?
'Cause I feel like I'm commenting.
What's that?
I feel like we're starting to get into council comments.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, is there anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Now, we're closing to public comment.
Well, I just have no idea.
I'm still wondering how many times she's gotten pulled over at Midland.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that.
Oh, right, yeah.
Anyway, I think it's back to council comments.
So, uh, to bring it back to council for discussion and/or emotion. Um, I, I'll, I'll just throw out a thought here that um, until these are actually bid, we don't really have a good idea what the savings are go- are going to be. As Mike said, it could be four hundred thousand, it could be nothing, it could be more. But, we won't know unless we put it out to bid. These do have, I think there's a likelihood that we will at least save what we spent on the design. And uh-
Mike, well, just for clarity though, that would be assuming we went with that bid alternative and, and that the council didn't want that extra three feet and the extra guardrails.
I mean, something else to consider that, um, you know, how many times has a car, ha- having actual, with, with the guardrail between the sidewalk and the road, while it may provide some uh, appearance of, of safety for, for pedestrians, it, it completely disconnects the sidewalk from the roadway for someone getting out of their car and walking down the sidewalk, which probably happens a heck of a lot more than a car jumps the curb and hits a, hits a pedestrian. So, you would have to get out of your car, jump a guardrail and then walk down the sidewalk. And so, there, there's-
So, ca- I'm just, I-
If you went with the base option.
Yeah, yeah, but what are you saying, what scenario would somebody get out of car and jump?
I, I mean, you've never gotten out of a car and-
Jumped a car through?
I mean, you-
When you run from the policeman gets stopped. It's like, it's like you get, you break down, you drop off pedestrians.
Yeah, you drop it off with pedestrians.
Okay, okay, no, I'm not, I'm not, no, I'm sorry.
I'm not planning on abandoning my car in the middle of Midland. I'm just saying that-
Yeah.
How many times, I mean, I, I, you know, my office is down here. I, I don't know how many times I see someone stop a car and pedestrians jump out-
Yeah, okay, okay.
And go walk away, you know, and so-
I thought you meant like stop a car, the driver gets, okay, sorry, I've just-
No, vi- pedestrians getting out of a car and, and, and/or being picked up.
Yeah.
The other, that's another likely scenario. It's like, okay, I see my friend walking down the sidewalk, it's like, hey, John, do you wanna ride? You know, and, oh, yeah, sure, let me trip over this guardrail and get in your car, you know? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
So, there, there's actually a functional reality that, that, that guardrail separation is not beneficial. The idea that it's gonna protect people from snow being plowed, it's not. It'll go right through the guardrail, it's gonna end up on the sidewalk. We uh, had that issue on, on uh, the other portion of Midland where we, you know, the, the, the snow plows would plow up on the road or on the sidewalk, the sidewalk was never getting cleaned off. I think that between Brian and, and our streets department, last couple of years, I think we've done a really good job of, of dealing with that. But I think, I'm not exactly sure how we deal with it, but I think all the snow goes in the road. So, that again is gonna make it a little more difficult with the guardrail between the, you know, you're gonna have to plow the snow off the sidewalk into the road and then through the guardrail and then pick it up i- in the road. So, there's, there's some functional considerations. My question is, what are we getting? There is, there is no benefit from a rockfall catchment issue with the ten-foot versus the eight-foot. There's a slight benefit in the hundred-year flood staying in that versus not staying in that. That's, that's not a, a, a frequent event and it's not a common event. And so, you know, my, my point is, what are we bet- if, if this bid, if this alternate thing saves us a hundred thousand dollars, why wouldn't we build it? Because it has every element that we decided we needed. It has a six-foot sidewalk, it has curb and gutter on both sides, it has two full lanes, it's got full drainage structures, it's got, you know, guardrail the whole length, et cetera. So, what are we not getting with that alternative that we are getting with the base project? And so, I would um, suggest that we, we uh, go ahead and approve the change order and have both projects bid out and then go from there. I, I, I don't disagree that when we, even with this, when we get both projects bid, there's a, probably a not insignificant probability that uh, we will be looking at something different. that we will be looking at something different because if it comes in at twelve or thirteen, fourteen million dollars, we're going back to the drawing board anyway. But, you know, if, if, hopefully the estimates are accurate and, and it comes in close to the estimates, even if it just saves us two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, that's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And we have every element of the project that we decided we needed, so.
Would we conversely save one-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars if tonight we were to say as a council, hey, we actually like the bid alternative, let's just, let's just build that, that section as it was presented tonight and don't bid, don't bid the base project now? Would we conversely save that one-sixty-five and get on going? Because we're really down to a guardrail from what I can tell.
Yep.
Um, change of height of walls, nail walls.
Yeah, but that's like engineering stuff. I mean, the weather, the wall's two feet higher. Nobody in the audience, no one's gonna drive by and go, I really wish that wall were two feet higher. It's either gonna work or it's not.
But eight feet versus fifteen feet is a, is a big difference on a wall like that.
So, it's, you know, it seems to me that if the guardrail is the bugaboo here and we don't need it, I think the mayor has eloquently argued that we don't, and I'm tending to agree with that, can we just go with what we've already got, which is the base project and just pull the guardrail out of that in the bid?
How much does a guardrail cost a square foot? Sorry.
No, no, I just-
It's a linear foot and it's about twenty-five bucks, thirty bucks?
Yeah, they, around thirty-five right now. Is, is, that's kind of, that's the range that, thirty to forty is what I've been seeing lately on, on most CDOT projects.
But you, you wouldn't want to pull the guardrail out of that project and not push the sidewalk up to the, in my opinion, up to the back of curb, you know, there's-
Be a design.
You'd have, you'd have a three-foot weed zone there that is-
So, and the consideration is not losing the guardrail, because you're not gonna lose the guardrail to either option. It will be pushed to the outside, so you still have three thousand feet of it, or it's on the inside. It's what handrail you're going to lose. You know, and we'll still have handrail whether it's fifteen hundred or two thousand linear feet, but, you know, we can do maybe some cost savings on the handrail with the base option. We're gonna go with a metal rail that has posts attached to the concrete. With the alternative option, we may end up going with kind of a wood rail, you know, that has three rails, kind of like on the West Midland Trail out there, those kinds of things. So, it's kind of not really whether you have guardrail or not, it's whether it's here or here. The considering, cost consideration will be more of what, where's the handrail and how much? Just to throw that out at you, because thirty dollars is guardrail. Handrail, you know, depending on what we do, can be thirty dollars to a hundred dollars.
Right.
And those are some of the things we're gonna do a cost control as we're moving through the project.
Right. Thanks, Matt.
And I think-
Oh, sorry, Mike. Go ahead.
And I think maybe this goes back to Todd's point. I think, and we mentioned it earlier, even with the base project, you know, we, we will be looking at making some, some tweaks to the alignment from what we currently have in the base project to, to try to minimize at least the downhill walls. Because the, you know, on a square foot basis, downhill big block wall is pretty comparable to an uphill soil nail wall. But you throw that sidewalk on and you throw the railing on, that cost gets pretty, it, it, it goes up pretty quickly. And so, we, you know, we-
Mine, mine's still up.
We're up.
Oh, is it?
We're, we're not. We went blank for some reason.
Oh, we went down.
Jim, you had a question?
Yeah, uh, maybe it's more of a comment than a question, but, you know, it, when we were originally looking at alternatives to the base.
I guess we're all in agreement.
Presentation. Might as well have lights.
Yeah, meeting adjourned. When we were originally looking at alternatives, and, and we really didn't know. We thought, well, maybe there's a way to save millions of dollars. But by the time we were done in our last council meeting discussion, we really weren't comfortable with anything that didn't include, you know, the sidewalk and the proper drainage and all those things. And, and so, what we ended up with is, you know, maybe about a two-hundred-and-fifty thousand and by the time you're done doing these tweaks, maybe even that disappears. And so, I, I guess, I'm sort of where my head's at on it currently is, and I don't mean to be cavalier about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, but that's probably even gonna change when you're done doing the tweaks and get even smaller. We're down to a percentage point or something on it. And, and the offsets to that are, you know, is, is it safer to have the guardrail between the cars and, and, and the, and the sidewalk? We don't have it on North Midland. I damn near ran off and ran into a car. Then I swerved the other way, went down the hill and lost my wallet, so I, I can-
Did you have a hundred-and-sixty-four thousand in that wall by any chance?
Yeah, no. But I, you know, just from that personal experience, I can see some benefit of, of having, having the, the barrier between the cars and, and the sidewalk. And Shelley, you've mentioned the, the wall issue and, so I, you know, personally, I would not have any reservations just moving forward with the base because I think if there's a more interesting discussion we're gonna have, it's not going to be about this one-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollar change order. It's gonna be what do those bids come in at? You know, is there gonna be a change order that's due to trying to cut or deal with a millions of dollars kind of issue? Again, this one, I can't get too excited. I could go either way, to be honest with you, but I sort of feel like we're not getting, we're not getting a lot of bang for the buck of what we're cutting out of the base and if it was up to me, I'd, I'd pick the base. Thanks.
Thanks, Jim. Jonathan?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I personally am not going down on the guardrail ship. You know, I can see some advantages and disadvantages. I, I think the thing that, you know, I think Counselor Davis spoke to it and Jim just did as well, an attached sidewalk from Twenty-seventh Street to Eighth Street just kind of sucks. I mean, it, it's just, it's a less usable sidewalk. And so, to me, the question isn't so much, you know, two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars difference for, you know, basically, we're getting all the similar features. But, you know, people passing a bike and a pedestrian having a buffer zone, whether it has a guardrail or not, you know, I think, I would like to hear more about benefits or, or not about that, but, you know, that can come out in the wash. But having that buffer zone, I think, is important because people coming, if they have a bike and having that room to not be right against traffic is important. The Transportation Commission, I think we don't, we need to go back to, you know, if we have a commission that has weighed in on it, and they did, and they liked the idea of having a lower potential maintenance cost throughout the life of this project with a ten-foot catchment, but that wasn't their big thing. They, they were very, very focused on having the base design view of that sidewalk, of having the sidewalk and the buffer and the guardrail. And that was, we had everybody there and it was a unanimous seven-zero vote. So, I, I think based on, on that recommendation, you know, that doesn't inform my decision. I think having a buffer is important, but I think that that should weigh in on it. You know, I just, I, I think if you play poker, a hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars for four-hundred thousand dollar savings, that's an awful lot to see a flop. That, that's pretty big. And I just don't know, I, I'd love to talk a little bit about that forty-seven thousand a, at some point as well, but I just don't know that we need to have two designs go out to bid on every project we do in the city because I think it, it starts to get wasteful, especially when we're gonna cost engineer it anyway. I think Todd, to your point, it, the engineering, I'm, I'm inclined to say, oh, that's this engineering, that's for the pencil.
I'm just saying your average person between eight feet and twelve feet, nobody's gonna know.
Well, and I think-
They just wanna know, do I get to drive home?
No, I think you're right, but I think, I think visually and aesthetically, the difference between fifteen and eighteen is a difference. That's, that's a, that's a big difference. So, you know, and I'm, again, I, I think, I still don't understand necessarily why if we have a catchment, they'll go from ten feet to eight feet, why we still couldn't maintain a two-foot buffer, why that buffer just has to go in, has to be an attached sidewalk. I, I don't, I haven't quite understood that because you're, you're taking two feet from a catchment, so whatever. But, yeah, I, I don't know that two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of potential hopeful savings is worth it to have a sidewalk that is compromised.
I would just point out that when, A, you've, you've talked about the, the uncomfortableness you, you have when you're on the five-foot wide sidewalk on the, on Midland between Eighth and Twenty-seventh. That is a five-foot wide sidewalk. This would be a six-foot wide sidewalk. In fact, it's six and a half. Their, their, the, the top of the curb would effectively be functional sidewalk. And so, it's in fact a six and a half foot wide surface. The fact that you don't have a barrier on both sides is actually gonna make it feel more comfortable, particularly for bike riders, when, when you're riding next to a guardrail. The back of a guardrail is a series of posts. They're either I-beams or they're wooden posts. And they're going to be not really fun to run into with your bike. And, you know, people are comfortable on their bikes riding six, eight inches off the edge of the curb, generally, if they're watching where they're going. And whereas you're not gonna be comfortable riding six or eight inches off the edge of a guardrail. So, I actually think that when we build it, people would be more, if you, if you had, if we could just go do two mock-ups right now, people are gonna be, I believe, more comfortable with the, with the alternate bid, walking and riding their bikes on it than they would with the, with the base bid. But I'll just let that go. And Rick?
Well, I'd like to ask the fire chief, you know, if you have a big, long forty-foot fire truck, would it be easier if there were no guardrails on the roadway, right on the roadway, to turn a truck around if you had to do that? And I know I'm putting you on the spot, Gary, but I'm also getting even for a few things here.
I mean, obviously, the lack of guardrail would make maneuverability for our apparatus. Back to Jonathan's point, at least he could, at least he could pull up on the sidewalk when the officer's behind him. Give us a compare, but I, I don't think that that should be, our access should not be a consideration.
Right.
Nice job.
Is that it, Rick? Shelley?
Oh, I was just gonna speak to, I heard a couple of comments that, you know, we're talking a lot about the guardrail between the sidewalk, but I guess one of the most important aspects to me of that is that three-foot buffer. And I, and that kind of brings up the question is, do we need the guardrail there if we have the three-foot buffer? Is there a, you said it-
You would have to have a guardrail on the outside of the sidewalk.
On the outside, but I'm talking about the one between the sidewalk and the streets.
The pedestrian rail would then turn into a bridge-rated rail because you don't want cars going over and then launching onto the buildings down below.
Oh, so that's what that guardrail is-
So, we need some form of guardrail within that area.
Okay, for that.
As it is mostly out there.
So, it's more about the drop-off below?
And we get started with the buffer and a bridge rail on the outside. Bridge rail's very expensive. The cantilever moment beam you would have to put in there, concrete-wise, to accommodate for that.
Okay.
Massively expensive.
That makes sense. Okay.
So, that's why we move the guardrail in. You would get a little bit of green area behind the guardrail before you actually got to the sidewalk, so, you know, it's-
Okay.
Kind of a give and take. I mean, you're getting six extra inches with the back of curb. I know that the mayor had mentioned, maybe that was part of the six feet. We kind of floated a little extra six inches in there for feel.
Right, right.
If you decided to go with this. So, we're trying to balance it out. I mean, there are pros and cons for both of them. The sidewalk will be difficult to plow.
Yeah, but the, the important piece to me is that three-foot buffer in there and the setback from the curb. And for similar reasons what Jim talked about, you know, if you're riding your bike along that sidewalk and whether it's young kids or adults, you know, you've, you've just got more safety if you have a little more separation from the roadway and you're not going into the lane. And I've had a similar experience on Midland where I almost went off the curb and into, into the driving lane, so. And I also think that having a recommendation for the base option from the Transportation Commission speaks to, you know, it's a, it's a valid recommendation from a commission of experts and citizens working on transportation in the city and, and I think that, that holds a lot of weight, especially with it being unanimous, so.
Jonathan?
Yeah, the only other thing, the Transportation Commission, this is probably not a big deal for this conversation, but they were talking about widths of handlebars and the pedestrian railing on the downhill side hypothetically, can that be made by code low enough so that an adult on an adult bicycle can have? Just, because I, I agree with you, Mike, with the, the, the guardrail. I don't think it's a huge issue. I mean, it, yeah, it's not great. I'd rather not have a barrier, but I think it's the handlebars things that the guardrail, at least the guardrail wouldn't, would impede with the widest part of a bike, which is the handlebars. But we, can we do that pedestrian railing or is that by code have to be higher than forty-two inches?
Uh, pedestrian rail, minimum is forty-two inches.
Okay.
And that's both.
That's the other question that they had or thought they had.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I haven't verified that today because I figured it would come up.
Yeah, the, the only other point is, you know, not to be critical, Matt, you said there'd be a little bit of green zone with that buffer. We're not irrigating it and we're not actually landscaping it, so it would be actually a weed zone.
Green dirt, you know, whatever you call that.
Yeah.
Freeze zone.
Yeah. So, you know, I, I still believe that, you know, the likelihood that when we put this out to bid, it's, comes in well over our budget. Then we're going to be going back to the drawing board is much higher with the base project than with the, the alternate project. You know, Jim, you were, you were indicating that you thought that when they made their tweaks on the base project, they're gonna get rid of that. It's all comparable, you know? They make the tweaks on the base, they're gonna make the same cost-saving tweaks on the, on the alternate. And so, any savings that you see on one, you would be able to, you know, essentially achieve the same thing by, by, you know, making similar, similar tweaks on the other. So, I, I, I would still, I, I don't disagree that I think that the, the fees are, are high. I wish they were a lot less for doing this alternate design. But I think that at the end of the day, we will see that we were, we are going to probably go, be going with something like the alternate design when we ultimately build it because we're not gonna build it for the base design. That's my expectation.
Can, can we talk, just, sorry to, can we talk a little bit about change order four or do we have to take these as separate items?
Well, why don't we, for just discussion purposes, why don't we, let's get this one decided and then we can do-
I think that would be because they're really kind of unrelated.
Yeah.
I mean, they're related but unrelated.
Right.
Getting some direction on this is kind of critical.
Yeah.
I guess to that end, then I would make a motion to reject the change order three and associated cost and continue with the base option of forty-six feet of width with accompanying buffer and/or potentially a guardrail or not going forward. The base. Let's just go with the base option and-
So, basically, you're just saying reject change order number three?
Correct. Yes, I could do that. Yeah.
The short version of your motion.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
So, just so that I'm clear on that though, because if we reject the change orders, we're not, we're saying we don't want to spend the extra one-hundred-and-sixty-five grand on an alternate bid, are we choosing one of the two alternates then?
I believe in the last-
Are we gonna go back and discuss that?
I think at the last council meeting, we already decided to go ahead and designed a hundred percent the base option.
100% the base option.
You just approved that in consent.
Right.
We, we could arguably, if the council wanted to say, we'd rather go with the alternate option for our base bid.
Yeah, it, it may be worthwhile to clarify your motion to say reject, if this is what you mean, is to reject change order number three and continue to 100% design with the base bid option.
Only?
Only.
That would be my motion.
Yeah, that's what I thought you were trying to say.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
Would you read your motion one more time, Jonathan?
I, I would.
I'm, I'm suffering from overload of prepositions.
Yes, I, my motion is to continue with the base design and reject change order three, period.
I'd second that.
All right, so we have a motion by Jonathan and a second by Rick to continue with the base design and reject change order three. Is there any further discussion? Let's go ahead and call the question.
Inconnes, go de jess, gamba nou, layi nou, vori jess, cap, yes, motion passes.
There we go. Direction.
All right, so now we need to discuss change order four, which is the breaking out of the intersections for the bidding process.
Completion of the final design through those, all those intersections and breaking them out for individual bid tabs within the bidding process.
So, so if we go back, I believe it was in November, we had a work session to discuss the, the intersections. And at that time, we, we presented a change order or some, for, for, for the intersection designs. And that included taking those intersections from zero to 100%. At the time, that was approximately, I want to say it was in the range of 50,000 to 60,000 for the full design of all those base options. The direction we got at that point was, let's take all the intersections to 20, to 30%, get them to the same level as the, as the rest of the project, and then we'll decide on final design for the intersections after that. So, like Matt said, you know, there, there's, the bulk of this change order four is that final design of the intersections that we, that we left from that original discussion.
Okay, so those, can I ask a question? So those intersection designs from 30% to final were not included in the, the final design that we just approved in consent?
It was not part of the original RFP.
Not part of that.
It was pulled out for, I don't exactly remember why, to be honest with you.
I honestly, yeah, I.
I don't remember why that got pulled out at the, the last minute kind of thing.
Okay, okay.
So, you know, it might have been because, you know, multiple engineers could look at them multiple different ways. For considerations, we wanted the bids to kind of be as consistent as humanly possible. So straight section, roundabout, this is what we're doing kind of thing. So when we looked at it, we said, okay, do we want to put it in front of council? Do they want to have any interest in looking at these intersections and making improvements to them? Because they can stay the way they are right now, but we can still design around them. So that was brought forward and said, you know, do you want to bring it to 30% to kind of take a consideration of, are they interesting, are they not interesting? You know, you can decide you don't want to look at Hager, but you want to do Old Cardiff, you do want to look at Three Mile, you don't want to look at Three Mile, those kinds of things. So this would be a comprehensive change order for taking all of those intersections to 100% slash bid set, be part of the bid process, and be broken out into individual summary sheets with the base option as it moves forward.
So we can still kind of choose to do one and not the other at a later date, basically?
You kind of have to decide that now.
We do, okay.
Not, not, is your, is your question, Shelley, we can choose to build one or the other intersection or we could choose to design one or the other intersection?
We can choose to build based on how the bids come back.
Yes.
So if later we'd be able to choose, that's exactly why we're doing this.
That's why you're breaking it out.
Each one.
Okay.
And considering those intersection summaries were 250 to $700,000, it might not be a bad investment to bring them all up to 100%. And if you decide we're over budget, we could kill them all if that's what we need to, to get it down. Or we could, you know, get rid of that one or this one if we consider it to be a little less important than another one.
Okay.
So it'd kind of be bringing, it'd be bringing the whole project to fruition and saying, okay, here's the entire project, you know, at its grandeur and say, okay, it's nine or 10 or whatever million dollars it is, but we really want it to be nine. So if this is a million dollars, that one will go away kind of thing.
Okay, great.
So it gives you a lot of options in the future to start picking and choosing during, after the bid process.
Okay, that sounds great.
Rick?
In the vote that we just took, there were some cost estimates that were attached to the actual construction. And here I see, you know, the change order and the design 47,000, but you haven't got to the point of sort of figuring out what Hager Lane and the roundabout and the rest of the intersections would actually cost at this point?
We, we got that last, at the last meeting.
That was last meeting. We did put all those together, and that's why I'm saying that it's a fairly small number. You know, I don't remember whatever off the top of my head it was, it's like Old Cardiff was 350 or 450,000 dollars.
Right.
You know, that could be one, if you decide not to do that intersection or Hager, you would recoup that money fairly quickly, you know? But you'd be able to bring it to final design and say, okay, we are under budget at the end of this whole thing with every intersection we want to miraculously. And then we could do all of the work at one time.
And, and I would also just add that that, those designs, if we did decide to, say, pull off one or more of those intersections because we couldn't afford to build them at this time, those designs aren't necessarily going to.
Go away.
Go away. We could choose to build it a year or two later when money came in, so.
Excellent point, Mr. Herr.
This is something that, you know, I think makes a lot of sense to move forward with.
I agree with that. Do we need to open this up to the public?
Well, I think the whole issue is already open to the public, so, you know.
Do you guys want to make a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd move that we approve change order number four.
I second that.
A motion by Jim and a second by Shelley to approve change order number four. Is there any further discussion? Let's call the question.
Inconnes, go de jess, gamba yes, layi yes, vori jess, cap yes, motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is North Landing Development Proposals. My understanding is regarding the purpose of this is that several meetings ago, we received our responses from our RFP for development proposals on the North Landing. I think we all kind of liked one of those responses, except then we later learned that the response really wasn't for development, but was just more for design. Is that a fair summary?
That is correct.
And therefore, we are looking for a, an official rejection of all, all responses to that RFP. And then a.
Maybe some directions.
And then some direction to staff to, what do we want to do next? So first, I guess tackling the first thing, does anyone have a problem? Do we need to make an official motion on that?
I think it'd be nice to just clean up the process and have somebody to reject all the proposals.
Do we need to open that to the public, do you think? Anyone in the public want to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I will bring it back to council for a motion regarding rejection of all proposals we received for the North Landing RFP, development RFP.
I so move.
Say yeah.
All right, a motion by Rick and a second by Todd to reject all proposals we received, development proposals on the North Landing. Any further discussion? Let's call the question. All right, now as far as direction to staff, whoop, sorry. I guess we need to actually count.
You could be mortally surprised by that.
Democracy.
It didn't fail, or failed.
Inconnes, go de jess, gamba yes, layi yes, vori jess, cap yes, motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thanks. So now we need to provide staff with direction.
Really on two items. The first is, you know, do we improve a RFP, you know, then bring it back to you guys and then get it out again? I mean, we have issues with parking that we need to address. And then I think it would also be good for us to think a little more about what we actually would like on that site and have a more defined RFP process. And the second thing I think we need direction on is, the North Landing site obviously isn't going to be developed by June 30th. The plan from CDOT is to have grass there and nine trees. There will be temporary water for the trees, but we'd also need to water the grass if that's what we want. I do think, certainly, grass is better than dirt.
Yes.
Can we plant the nine trees somewhere else? Obviously, that's not the plan to have grass and nine trees on this parcel. So we're just going to end up tearing them out and probably killing them. Can we move them somewhere permanent?
Hopefully replant them, but yeah. I mean, we could ask CDOT if they'd be willing to plant them somewhere else.
Where we actually want them.
Can we get them to buy, how many, they're, they're putting in nine trees?
No, I believe it is nine trees.
And I don't know if, if this kind of tree is the same price as that kind of tree, but we've got a whole bunch of trees proposed on the, on the Sixth and Laurel Roundabout. Can we just trade it straight out for nine trees over there or the equivalent cost of trees over there?
We can ask. I don't, I don't know, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So is that, oh, you can vote, but that's kind of essentially grass and see if the trees can go someplace else?
Well, and then there's the issue of, if, if this becomes grass and it becomes a de facto.
We're actually going to address that.
Later.
I think the next, I, I've been pondering how to make that not happen.
Okay.
And I think for the short term, what I'd like to do is adopt a resolution, probably the next meeting, identifying the parcel that is a temporary use and it's not the intent of council to turn it into, our, our charter says park for governmental purpose, and it's not the intent of council to have it be used long-term as a park or for other governmental purposes. The intent of council is that it be developed as part of the redevelopment of Sixth Street. And I think we just adopt a resolution so that our intent is clear, so that anytime if, if it takes us a while to get something going there, our intent is clear as to what that parcel was for.
Okay.
Okay. Will it have a, oh, sorry. Will it have a sidewalk in front of it? I mean, where will that be?
It has the pedestrian bridge sidewalk on the one side and then on Sixth Street, there is.
Along Sixth.
There is, I think there's a sidewalk out there now.
I believe there is, yeah. I mean, it's hard to tell because there's always equipment, people on it.
Right, I just see the dirt and.
I think, I think I, I, just in one of the Grand Avenue Bridge photos that they sent out, I think it showed the really recently poured sidewalk along Sixth Street.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I, I could be wrong, maybe I was looking at something else. No? I'm right?
You're right.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm just wondering about, what's our general feel for how long it will be before we might have development on that site? And would it be worthwhile to have a couple trees? I mean, does it hurt?
I, I think the, at least from my recollection, when we got those bid, or those designs, was that until we have a development code finalized, it's going to be tough to attract legitimate and well-thought-out development proposals. So I think that, at least the conversation, I believe, at the time was, let's, you know, put a pin on this until that development code gets done so we can at least give people who might bid on it some certainty about what we'd like to see there. Because when we put it out for design, I remember specifically having conversations several months prior where there's kind of general consensus of, hey, you know, 36 feet is our code, but let's not get bound up about that, you know? Anything that's a little less than Hotel Colorado, I mean, I remember having conversations like height isn't a big deal, but when it went out, it went out as with all current applicable design. So I guess I'd like to see that development code give a developer some certainty on what they might be proposing instead of just kind of what we got, which is throwing some stuff on the paper and going, oh, gosh, let's see.
Right.
Yeah.
We got, we got some good concepts and.
Yeah, yeah.
I think to Shelley's point, though, we're going to have the development code, or both of you guys' point, it better be adopted.
No, it isn't. And so we're, we're, we're hopefully, I mean, optimistically, we're looking at one, one summer, maybe two summers of whatever this temporary use is.
And temporary trees that get planted wouldn't be big enough to matter anyway.
Right, right, so, okay, great.
All right, so do we need a motion on this or is a head nod of like trying to get the trees?
Are you clear?
I believe I am clear.
We say believe.
No grass, I mean, grass, no trees.
Can I ask one question, though? If we designate it, I understand we very clearly don't want it to be a park. We're going to be very clear in this resolution that it's not the intent. Is there anything about whatever it is designated to be, how it's described, that would restrict the city from enforcing things like you can't sleep here or anything like that?
No, no. I mean, it's still, it's still city property, that kind of thing. I mean, yeah, we can still, all the regular restrictions would apply to any city property would apply.
Okay.
And we can, in our proprietary capacity, it's just, we get hung on that park designation in terms of flexibility.
Thanks. Yeah, and I, I think we're clear on that, I don't.
Do we wait for the new RFP or, or until we, our development code's clear then, that what's going to, that's going to be zoned for, what's going to be allowed?
Right.
So that we're not just saying, yeah, go ahead and do this, but then you might not have the right code to do it.
Right.
I think we just need clarity before it goes back out.
And parking clarity as well.
Parking clarity, yeah.
Because I, I guess I'd be willing, you know, in the interest of time, because knowing that from concept to actually getting something, you know, breaking ground, we're probably, in reality, talking 18 months to two years. I mean, that's just the way projects work. And, and so I, I, you know, to me, I think, you know, between now and August, we, we pretty much know what our new code's going to look like. You know, we, we anticipate that we're going to have some form of parking relief over there. I'd be willing to, to the extent it's going out on a limb, do that and say, you know, give us development proposals that essentially, you know, you know, we eliminate the parking requirement for that property. You know, I do think we, we all felt the, the need for a, you know, I think some of the guidelines we'd want, and I don't know if they were in the original RFP or not, but we all talked about kind of wanting some form of a privately owned but publicly available plaza space around, you know, in front of a building. But, you know, I'd be willing to, I mean, I'm not sure what other issues were going to get resolved with our new code than, than, I mean, it's parking and it's building height and, and it's the, the use of the property. The use of the property isn't going to be defined by the code other than, you know, we're not looking for some heavy industrial use, you know? We're looking for, you know, a mixed use, you know, commercial, you know, residential potentially. I don't know. I, I guess I'd, I'd like staff to start working on a, another attempt at a, at a, at an RFP, you know, so that we could get it back out and so we could start getting some proposals on it.
You're saying we, we don't really need to wait until August or when the, you know, that makes sense to me as well.
Can we just, like, continue to have the existing RFP open?
Well, you just killed it, which I think is good. Kind of close that process. I think we, you know, we want something more specific. We got some good feedback from you guys on what you like, the kinds of things you would like to see. I think we can work on it and see how big the lag time is, recognizing there's just a bandwidth issue as well in terms of which high priority thing you guys have identified we, we work on next.
Right.
So I think we can, we'll start working on it in anticipation that the code is going to be in place, and let's just see how far off those two things are from each other. Because obviously, from our perspective, the code is like the priority in Jen's life and my life. Deborah doesn't, I don't think, feel the code is quite as important as Jen and I do.
Not as strongly.
Not as strongly.
Yeah.
But anyway, so that's really something that we want to try to push through and get done, so.
But like, let us take a stab at it and, you know, we'll bring it back and we'll see what we think, but, okay.
So, is that okay?
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to be working on it as soon as we get it done.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, South Bridge origin and destination study.
Hello again, council.
Hello.
So Terry was available tonight, so she asked me to try to step in and do the best I can to be Terry to discuss this. Back in December 2017, she presented to you guys two options for better understanding the travel within the city versus county and who lives where kind of discussion. At that point, it was kind of thought we may be able to use that air. At that point, it was kind of thought we may be able to use that air sage data that Rafta was using for all of their analysis of travel within their area. From the information that we've gotten that Parsons is trying to work with the people who have the air sage data, that that is not going well for them. They actually kind of recommended that we don't try to use that. It may take us an exuberant amount of time or we may never get anything done with that particular company that is not based locally, we'll say. The second option was to discuss development of a traffic model for kind of all of Glenwood to utilize it for not just South Bridge, South Midland conversations, Twenty-Seventh Street Bridge conversations with possible partners and funding, but to use it as a global city kind of conversation of where our traffic is and get a better idea of maybe how are your roads are actually used volume-wise. So what Terry kind of did is said, okay, that's kind of a grandiose plan. You know, we have more of an immediate need to try to figure out how many cars are really going in and out of the city? How many, where are those cars are coming from, where they're going, maybe more points Pacific and South Glenwood. You know, so we can have Twenty-Seventh Street Bridge conversations, South Midland redesign conversations, rebuild conversations and South Bridge conversations with hopefully some partnering efforts. And what they've come up with is the Jacobs has proposed kind of two different options with this. One is working with a company called Streetlight that does kind of the same cellular analysis. So what they do is they, we could pick up to fifty different zones. And what they consider a zone is, you know, like an intersection, intersection, intersection. But those intersections don't have to be in Glenwood. They could be in Rifle. They could be in Silt. They could be south of town. And we could get a really good idea by picking up cells and tracking them across the towers where people are going, not who they are, but just generally where they started from and where they're going. So if somebody comes in from Rifle and drives all the way through town, we'd be able to track them. If somebody comes off of Four Mile and they go down Midland, cross Twenty-Seventh Street Bridge and then south of town, we can kind of track them. The accuracy of this product is a little bit less than a license plate. I would say a little bit less. It's about a third to a quarter of the license plate accuracy because they can't always keep track of the signals. So they get about twenty-three percent of very viable signals through the traffic patterns from where they're going to where they're, where coming from, where they're going. And what they do at that point is Jacobs comes in and does traffic counts in certain areas. And they interpolate. They said, okay, we're really confident in this percentage was doing this. We know there's ten thousand people going through that intersection, so that percentage is brought up to whatever number of vehicles that is. So this is really quick, pretty accurate, we'll call it. It's good for many funding conversations, I would put it. And we can run it for not just one to three days like we would kind of do for a license plate option, which we'll get to here in a second, but we could run it for a month. You know, if you want to know, they'll track everybody in these zones for us for a month. They just, it's a bunch of data bundled that gets thrown to them. They interpolate it, throw it out to Jacobs and Jacobs actually does the report.
Are are they able to say over the last year, because if we want it quick, you know, we may not want it. I mean, are they, they're not able to go back and 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 get data that was.
I know what you're asking.
From six months ago, say.
From my understanding, I had a conversation with VICA over at Jacobs today. That is not really how it works. We kind of have to pick the zones so that they can, you know, work with those particular zones in a particular timeframe.
To be in the future.
Yes.
Okay. Also, if, so if you're picking up twenty-three percent, is that, let's say we do a month, since different carriers, does it have to do with the carrier coverage and strength of signal and all that? I'm just wondering, are you picking up the same twenty-three percent all the time kind of thing? Or are you are you getting a wide variety?
From my understanding, it's kind of a mixed thing. So when somebody goes into the canyon, they may pop out the other side. They may regather that signal. They may not. So in overall, of everybody that's traveling through the area, they feel that their percentage is about twenty-three percent. And they've got algorithms. They toss those into and they, that they've got backup data to show how movements occur. And they put that into the algorithm and they move that forwards and then it's applied to actual traffic numbers. So once again, is it as accurate as looking at somebody's license plate and saying, okay, I know where they live because I looked up their license plate information. They passed by these three cameras and I kind of know where they're going? No, but it's still a super, it's a really good tool to do this over a longer period of time.
Right.
To be honest, we do for a less of a cost.
Right.
Than trying to do the license plate analysis. Not that that's not a viable option. I'm just throwing it out there. But it's it's a much shorter time period, so maybe Tuesday through Thursday kind of thing. And it's in a much more defined area. Like, we would probably only set up three or four cameras. So maybe one of north of Twenty-seventh, one on Midland, south of Twenty-seventh, a couple at the bridge, those kinds of things. So we can kind of determine who's going where in South Glenwood and where they came from. But it would not be a more global, hey, this person came from Rifle and went down all the way through Grand Avenue kind of thing.
And do we get any privacy issues or do they keep everything completely anonymous and?
It is completely anonymous. They track signals. They don't know who they are. They just know where the signal came from and went. And they push it out as a data set, so there's not even, you don't even know what that signal character was from Streetlight. It just goes to Jacob and they process all the information.
Okay.
With with the the cellphone signal data, would we be able to get the zones tight enough that we could determine routes other than Midland and Grand? In other words, you know, there's, you know, I I don't know how many people might do this, but someone coming in from Newcastle might get off at the one fourteen, go up on Highway Six for some reason. Maybe they're picking up a worker or whatever, come over the Grand Avenue Bridge and and, you know, go down Highway Two, vice versa. They may hit Midland Avenue at the one fourteen interchange and stay on Midland to Twenty-seventh. They may stay on Midland to Eighth Street, then get on Grand Avenue, you know? And so getting all those different routes figured out, who's coming from where and who's who's going where and by what route, that's, to me, the valuable.
And that that is something is is obtainable, I guess, because they're not working just off of cell signals. If people have GPS turned on their phones and everything else. So it comes down to a fairly, you know, if you have GPS turned on and we can track that signal through the cell towers, because it's also tracking the the GPS and the cell tower on your phone at the same time. So you're double traceable. It gets pretty good accuracy. When it's just a cell tower, they might not be able to distinguish between if you're on I-70 or US-6. But that you're traveling through that corridor, getting off on an interchange and then traveling south or whatever you're, or just continuing on through that corridor.
Rick?
Yeah, I think you might have answered this, but for each day, you're gonna get a profile bounced up against the cell towers. And for the next day, you're not necessarily gonna know if those are the same people or what the churn is.
No, and that's, that goes back to the privacy issue. You're not tracking somebody. You're just tracking a signal bouncing off of a tower.
Okay.
So if you run it for thirty days, maybe they get, I don't know, twenty-seven thousand cars. Maybe they get a few million signals that they've tracked. They feel good about twenty-three percent or plus or minus of those that they have real good accuracy on where they came from, where they're going, and they'll be able to put that in there. They'll track all of them, but if they lose them at all, they get a little bit of discrepancy, they'll just dump that data. So they want to feel good about the data that they're providing us and then put that towards actual traffic data.
So and as they extrapolate, you know, the data from twenty-three percent to a hundred percent, did they talk to you about methodology? I mean, is it built on sort of an urban model or a rural model or a hybrid? Or did any of that come up?
I do not have the answer to that question. That is actually one I didn't answer or ask. But I would assume that they have different levels of modeling that they do for certain areas. I mean, we're not downtown Denver, you know, where there's a ton of signals coming in and out of the towers or closer together. We're more of a rural community, so I would assume that they have different methodologies and algorithms that they apply for different areas. I apologize if I don't have the direct answer.
So like, they might get like a total signal bounce, but twenty-three percent of that bounce, they're going to be more more faith within that data?
That is my understanding, yes.
Maybe that's how they make up the other seventy, seven percent, something.
Correct. And they base it partly off of the traffic data that is given to them from Jacobs. They can see that, you know, this many came through here and that's matching what they have. So they can kind of interpolate out to make it as accurate as possible. So.
So it isn't like a lack of signal strength. It's just a lack of being able to really nail down that this is a cellphone under this tower.
Correct. Is the is when it's jumping from tower to tower, I'm assuming that they lose them at some point potentially. So. But there is also the option of going with a license plate data, which would give you, as Jacobs put in the, or Terry put in the staff's report, about an eighty-five percent accuracy.
But that that would be a much more limited scope. And I mean, essentially, we could figure out how many people are going over the Twenty-Seventh Street Bridge or down South Midland or down North Midland and where they came from. But we're not gonna get any of the other routes. We're not gonna get Blake Avenue. We're not gonna get Grand Avenue. We're not gonna get Eighth Street and Twenty-seventh and all that stuff. So.
And what I would kind of suggest is that, you know, if we would decide to move forward with the the cell signal version of this, they're allowing us fifty zones. We could define those zones and get a really good description of what we're going to get out of that one hundred percent. And maybe it could be presented to you guys again. But Traffic Cation Commission did have this conversation, I believe Jonathan might have been in that conversation. You know, there are different levels of data that are being provided. It's kind of, kind of like a membership, you know? You can either get just the standard bronze data analysis, which gives you zone activities, different custom day trips, kind of those kinds of things. You can go all the way up to the gold, which gives you pretty much every piece of information that they can extrapolate from a data signal within the fifty zones is precisely as humanly possible to get from it. And there's a cost differential in those things always. You know, you're getting, you know, traffic counts kind of here and here and here for one number. And you're getting traffic counts in origin destinations from as much as humanly possible they can they can gather. And it's gonna be more of how much time are they gonna put into the project, written reality most likely, versus the kind of data that we really want out of it. And Traffic Cation Commission suggested or voted on, suggested that the commission maybe move forward with the gold. It is a little more expensive. It is still less expensive generally than the license plates. And it is much more grandiose and encompassing for the area.
Did Terry's memo, because I had it in my head that Terry's memo sort of said something like, oh, the bronze is, will serve our needs? And then, I mean, we're not talking a huge cost difference, but I just had in my head that she'd said that I'd said, thought I'd read something like, oh, the bronze is really all we need.
So the bronze will serve the need, but considering who we're potentially going to bring this to, we thought serving the need is one thing. And being able to have as much information collected and processed in as accurate as humanly possible and getting all that information in one spot and be able to present that to other partners would be behoove us to move forward with that. So the bronze is kind of the bottom line. Yeah, it'll get us kind of generally what we need. But if we could spend the additional money on that, we would get a much more defined pieces of information, I guess, at the end of the day.
We would actually, with I've got the thinking, I've never really focused on traffic on I-70 through traffic on I-70, but that would give us that data as well for that matter. I mean, granted, we're probably not gonna put counters out on I-70 to extrapolate it, you know, but but.
CDOT has enough counters out. We may be able to work with those.
Yeah, yeah.
And we'd be using those counters probably for the eighty-two corridor kind of thing. We would focus the counters more in localized.
I have two questions. One is, do we have any money budgeted for this?
No.
No. So where would the funds come from for this?
I would suggest the, probably the A and I fund. So probably, you know, we could skim off a little bit from the South Bridge.
Okay.
We're not gonna use all of that money this year. But yeah, this was not an anticipated expense.
Right. And then if we decide to go, how quickly can they start collecting the data? And how quickly can we get our traffic counters out? The reason I ask is that I think it's important, we've talked about this before, but, you know, we we have different times of the year. We have completely different traffic patterns. During the school year, we have one traffic pattern. During the summer, we have a different pattern. We actually have, I think, a different pattern in winter, winter, spring and fall. And I know we're not gonna get fall and winter data, but it'd be great if we could maybe split the school. You know, I mean, get some time with school and some time without school. In other words, maybe start collecting middle of May and go to the middle of June or something like that. You know, that way we're getting at least those two sets of data.
So there's two different things going on. There's two different companies and two different data packs that are being collected. If we move forward with Streetlight, which is a consultant, obviously, at Jacobs at that point, they will start collecting whatever we want them to. It is them turning on their system, collecting that data and kicking it back out. We want that to correlate, obviously, as best we possibly can with actual data on the ground. So if they're collecting for thirty days and we're gonna collect for five, whatever it is on ground, we kind of want those five days to fall within that. I know Terry is very excited about getting this going immediately because it does affect about the EA that's going on at this point and some timeframes associated with that. So it was my understanding that this is gonna be kind of an immediate response.
I would I would suggest that we delay just enough so that we get, we go at least a week or two past the end of school. Would be my suggestion, so that we're getting a couple of weeks of data with school patterns and a couple of weeks of data.
Kind of thing. So by the time we get.
Start of the school year, but then get data, okay.
Yeah, I'm saying, start like May fifteenth and go to June fifteenth or, you know, something like that.
I would say that would probably, we'd probably be cutting it close to get the last two weeks in May at this point because we've got to get it approved, get the contracts together.
But that's okay because school's late this year. So school didn't even let out till, I think, June twelfth this year. So.
Oh, really?
Oh, because they started late.
It's a good point. It started two weeks later. So.
Then I would even suggest maybe going a little bit later then.
And I think that's what Matt's saying is by the time we get the package done, get them here, we're gonna, you know.
We're gonna be tight.
Probably gonna be late May, early June.
It's more about trying to make sure we get some time when school is in.
But I agree, that is a great thing. We should be getting, picking up the end of school and the the out-of-school traffic.
And to that point, if we can't necessarily get half and half, maybe we, would we want to delay it until August so we can get?
No. No.
Okay.
No, I know the EA has some pressing dates and we need to get it going as soon as possible.
Are we taking public comment on this?
We could. I mean, I don't think there's any.
Mike?
Mike, I want to say so.
I just thought we'd ask because I'm thinking of making a motion, but I did have one question. It looks like the silver gives us a lot of the data that we'd want. And I do appreciate the fact that this is, so this is more empirical, real data. So I actually prefer this over trying to build a traffic model that we may or may not use in the future.
Yep.
I think this will be.
Each one of these builds on each other. The bronze is kind of the base and then the silver is the bronze plus the silver. And then the gold is all the below and and those.
But the, this gold has like a trend analysis and the average annual, the daily traffic, do we really need those? I think we want the origin and destination, but what's staff recommendation? Do we need the gold or can we live with the silver?
So the thought process on the goal or the gold was that we would get some AADTs out of this thing. So we'll count what we can. We'll have that interpolated. We'll apply that. And then we can get more of the AADTs that we don't have in the city. We have them sporadically for the last four or five years here and there, at least ADTs. It would give us a nice base model to start with. Is it as good as putting counters out everywhere and doing the traffic counts over a long period of time to really get an AADT? No. But it gives us a good model so that when a developer comes in for Bell Rippey or something like that, they're saying this is what the traffic is over there. It gives us something to compare against. You know what I'm saying? So it's kind of a beginning point for discussions and and analysis. If we see large discrepancies in things, then we can dig into them a little bit more.
I guess based on that, I'll move that we move forward with the Streetlight data traffic study at the gold level.
I would second that.
Second.
We have a motion by Shelley and a second by Rick to proceed with the Streetlight traffic data using the gold model. Any further discussion?
Just one, one last question here. Your staff recommendation, the last bullet, says it sounds like it's possible to know if workers are commuting to Aspen and Basalt. So is that like a confident statement, Matt, or is that a statement that that you're pretty sure of?
It will be partly based on where we put our zones.
Okay.
So if we want to broaden out and try to figure out, like, once again, use this more as a model, not just for South Glenwood, but, you know, for the whole entire city, where are we gonna put our zones out there? We can put zones in Rifle. We can put zones in Aspen. Do we want to do that? Or do we just care that they made it to Carvinale? You know, those kinds of things. They made it out of our city limits and they're somewhere else.
Given that we have fifty zones, you know, you know, maybe we don't care that a car drives through Glenwood, goes from Rifle to Aspen or from Newcastle to Carvinale. But it actually is, I think, worthwhile. If if we have the ability, I mean, fifty zones is a lot of zones. I mean, that's that's a lot. We're gonna, we're gonna run out of zones in the city of Glenwood. You know, we're gonna have Jonathan's house. We're gonna have my house. You know? And so, you know, I I would suggest we go ahead and get that data. I think it's something that would be beneficial regionally so that we can kind of understand what the, what those patterns are.
What I was thinking about is if this data set, in conjunction with the housing study, would be pretty fascinating.
Yeah, definitely.
And understanding how many of those are moving on Carbondale or part of the Rock Valley, that would be really pretty fascinating in terms of.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest breaking up any of those communities into separate zones, but, I mean, into, you know, subdivide them, but, you know, well.
I mean.
Well, I do rifle as one zone, and the area around rifle, I do silt as one zone, I do Newcastle, and then, you know, Carbondale, Basalt.
And those things, we'd probably just focus on the interchange, here's an interchange, who came this way, did they show up in silt, did they show up in Glenwood kinda thing?
Right, right.
So that's my understanding of how the whole process functions.
So, and at the end of the day, we'll have better data than anybody else has, so.
We will, and we're able to utilize that data for internal uses, and it's, it's, you know, the bronze is good, the silver is probably where we'd minimally wanna be, to be honest with you, from what I've had discussions. And it's only five thousand additional dollars to kinda get those AADTs and some other pieces of information out of this thing, so let's get it. We've got a chance at this.
So in addition to the, one more question, I know we have a motion on the floor, but, I'm assuming, who is putting out the traffic counters? The fourteen-five is just getting the data, right?
Correct.
And so then, where's the cost for?
So the fourteen-five is the, the cost for streetlights, and if you read the, the staff report, the Jacobs is an additional seven, so that's why I was gonna.
Okay.
I wasn't gonna stop Councilor Voorhees, but we're actually twenty-one-five for this project.
For the total.
For the total.
Which is, you know, money well spent, in my opinion.
It's still pretty reasonable too for traffic data modeling.
It is.
Yeah, to get a, to get a really accurate origin destination study based on traffic counts and license plate studies and something that's gonna be this broad, we'd be probably spending a quarter of a million bucks, you know, to do it without cellphone data. I mean, to do it the, the old-fashioned way, if you would, you know, where we're, you know, and even then, we probably wouldn't be able to get this level of, of data. So I think it's, I think this makes sense. So, any further discussion, let's call a question.
Incom yes, Golda yes, Gamba yes, Leahy yes, Burhish yes, Kopp yes, motion passed and adjourned.
Thank you.
Good work, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. All right, report from city manager.
Okay, I know I sent you all an email, but I don't know if anyone read credit, because no one minded to. We have canceled the fireworks for July, just due to fireworks.
Is.
Is that a council decision?
No.
Okay.
I thought if we kept that thing low, that we'd be okay, like, that was kinda the whole point of keeping that fireworks display low.
And it rained today.
Yes, and what Gary intended if he was here is that would produce more fuels that will get drier as we get closer to.
Well, but isn't, isn't the fire hazard entirely a relationship of our precipit, I understand we had a dry winter. Actually, locally, it was only about eighty-five percent of average, so it wasn't, there's areas in the state that were forty percent of average. So we're, we're actually not horrible in terms of what we got precipitation locally. I, I think it's premature, I guess, is my point, because if it's dry between, you know, for, for the three weeks prior to July fourth, yeah, we'd probably have a high wildfire hazard. If we get precipitation during that period of time, it's all how, 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 it's the moisture content in your fuel, basically, is the, is the measure of, of fire danger. It's not how much snow we got in January that measures our fire danger, so.
I know there's extreme worry across the entire area about it, and I think, if you guys direct me to put on the fire show, we will. I cannot recommend that we do it. It's just, I think the risk is extremely high this year. Last year, we were worried, we had all of our fire department in Glenwood, and we were worried we'd have to pull them out to go to Newcastle to fight that fire. So, yes, if you guys tell me to do it, we will do it, but I am telling you, your fire chief does not think it's a good idea.
So, my question is, so we have summer of music that night, it's a Wednesday night, so what can we do as an alternate? Can we have big dance? Can we have a, yeah, I mean, if we wanna, you know, put on a good celebration for Fourth of July for the town locals and our visitors. I think we should try to come up with something fun and special for those evening hours, would be my comment.
Justin, I mean, parks and restrooms, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Well, last year.
You guys can always think about it, and I have recommendations that we do not do.
When, when is the, like, the deadline for ordering the, you know, ordering the fireworks and all that stuff, like?
Like, in the, in next week or so.
Yeah, that, I figured it was pretty soon here.
It's always, you know, three, a half number of jurisdictions get through this every year, because you gotta order so far in advance, you're making the best guess, you hope you guessed right. Because if you have to cancel at the last minute, you still paid for it, you just didn't get it used.
Well, in years past, when we've done that, we.
Sometimes they've been able to shift it to a different time or something like that, but there's, you know, you gotta do something with it.
I think it's really dry winters where people are really worried that it's going to be a very dry summer, and the fire risk is gonna kick up in June. At some point, we have to.
But isn't, with our, and again, I'm not trying to disagree with our fire chief, because he knows more about fires than I do. But I, I mean, I think this is not my eighth fireworks discussion, so I thought we went with that low fireworks, so that we could keep it contained. Because, you know, last year, I watched up like the Yampa School, I sat up there on their parking lot and watched, and, I mean, there wasn't a one spark of any kind going up even near there.
No, there were sparks that went into the crowd, and I was actually sitting on a blanket where we had to pick up and run.
That's because they.
It's not a perfect maybe system.
They had, they had a malfunction with their fireworks, they actually had a, had a firework that fell over and it shot into the crowd, and that was, that wasn't. I mean, that has nothing to do with, that, that was the contractor who did that, but.
I guess if we're talking wildfire though.
Yeah, and I, and I think part of this too is the perception of how we're responding to a dry year. You know, regardless of whether it is totally safe or not, I think part of it is about the message that we're sending to the citizenry and about what they're doing with their private fireworks during the season. I mean, this is, it could be dry in force, regardless of how much precipitation we start getting, or if we're gonna have some, probably not, it's not, we probably. My gut would tell me that, that Gary would say you can probably get away with doing it the way we were doing it. I do think there is a message here to be sent, and that is a discussion a lot of fire departments are having statewide. And I think there's also a question about how many resources they can allocate to any particular thing along the way as well. And I just know that because I'm, I'm talking to a half dozen departments across the state right now, in various areas for various reasons. And I think that's a lot of what's on their mind, is just what's the public perception of what they're doing this year.
Yeah, I, you know, I love Fourth of July fireworks and hate to see them go, but I think, you know, I would, I agree with your recommendation, with perception as being a part of it. It, because it just seems to me if we, you know, we're saying, well, we're concerned about the campfires and the transients have, we're, we're having these, you know, community things, telling people to prepare the, you know, around their, their property for. And so if, if we have all these sort of consistent messages, and then we, even, even if they, we thought, well, by doing them low and some stuff, we can probably do it safely. A lot of people are gonna read that, I think, is maybe speaking out of both sides of our mouth, and I don't think it's worth doing that.
The fire chief doesn't do that every year, and.
Yeah, I mean, if it was a normal year, I'd say let him struggle, let's do fireworks, because I love them, but I, this, this is not a normal year.
Well, actually, I just looked up precipitation data, we're, in Glenwood, we're ninety-four percent of average as of today. Well, and that's where the fireworks are gonna go on.
Yeah, no, that's, that's kinda my point.
You know, it's like, we're not, we're not doing them up on the hillside or anything, you know, we're, we're, we're not doing them, you know? So, anyway, whatever, it's, it's.
Can we punch this, or does a decision have to be made tonight?
I've already made the decision, you guys can override our decision.
Oh.
If you would like to.
Well, with.
I sent you an email like two months ago, but we've never responded, so.
Well, I think, I think, honestly, I think the problem was two months ago, it was horribly dry, we hadn't had snow in forty-five days, it was bone dry, it was probably warm for February. But today, it's wet, so it feel, it feels different, at least for me. But that doesn't change the fact that two months ago, it was dry.
Well, I'll, I'll throw this out there, and this is, like, with all due respect to all the idiots out there who are gonna do whatever they're gonna do in the forest, and they're gonna, and they're gonna do this whether it's dry or not, if they're, if they're so inclined to, to go start their forest on fire. I mean, we've, we've made concerted efforts to have a party that we would be consistent with every year, changed our firework display, made them shorter, short, made it more containable, if you will. With exception of the ones that go awry and start to park on fire. But, I mean, that's to me why we did it that way, so that we could have a consistent, organized Fourth of July. To, to me, it's one of our most important celebrations, if you will, especially in the mountains, people love to come up here and can plan on Glenwood Springs for, for the display that we do. I think the businesses plan on it, the citizens plan on it, I thought we did a good job of having a party planned that was consistent, and we didn't have to cancel. So, again, I, I, I don't wanna go against Gary or yourself, but I, I mean, we, we've spent eight years kinda dialing this in and dialing it in, canceling some shows along the way. And then we got a lot of feedback that people didn't like the fact that we canceled Fourth of July and didn't have, have that celebration, so.
We asked to cancel the Fourth of July.
But, but if it's just the fireworks thing, I mean, we're in the middle of town, that's why we, we have fire departments that can handle this. If something did happen in town, these things aren't going very far. I mean, I literally sat at the Yampa School the other, last year, which is right across the road, and there was absolutely nothing going on up there, and that's the closest hillside. And you could, so I just, I don't know, I hate governing for the least common denominator of the people that are gonna go out there and do something stupid at the expense of all the rest of us, who are actually following the rules. I mean, when there's fireworks, then I don't feel like the need to go out to do my own, I just go go watch someone, you know, the city put it on, because they're actually organized to do so. And have the equipment to do so, and the training to do so, and the staff to do so. So personally, I'd like to see us continue with this, and I, I don't think that the, that the fire danger is the, is the issue. Not, not in town.
Right.
Not in town. But that's, that's just me, so I, I would, I don't know what you're looking for as far as, you know, a head nod or whatever, what's that?
You need to do a motion, direct the city manager to hold fireworks on the Fourth of July.
Well, I would move that we continue with our, with our fireworks display, similar to last year, with a shorter version of the, of the fireworks that, that stay down low. So that'd be my motion, is that we do have fireworks consistent with last year, so this year.
We have a motion by Todd to continue with the fireworks display this year, is there a second? I'd be willing to second that, I would suggest a friendly amendment, and that is that if, at the time, you know, if, we don't get any moisture between now and, and July fourth, and, and in town, we really are in a. I, I don't believe right now we actually are in a higher wire, well, or, you know, wildfire hazard, and, I mean, ninety-three percent is pretty darn close to, to average, you know, you're, you're ninety-four percent, you're six percent off of average. So I know that statewide, there's concerns, we're not statewide, we're right here.
We're only like almost parkwide.
Yeah, exactly.
It's a very small area that we're talking about here.
You know, we're gonna continue to irrigate, you know, the, the tourist park, but anyway, I would, I would suggest a motion that if, for some reason, the wildfire hazard is considered untenable, you know, within a couple of weeks of the.
I would amend my motion to, to say that if the conditions on the ground, as we get closer to the Fourth of July, so warrant a cancellation, then, then the cancellation be made then, and we would do the fireworks at another time.
Okay, I would.
Can I ask you a question? Or we're not to discussion yet?
No, I, I was just gonna say, I, I, I second the amendment.
I just had a question on, are we, do we get into an obligation where we have to go under contract and pay for the fireworks?
We pay any cash on the order, but they can be shifted to winter. I think I see what you're saying.
Sorry, like, one of the things we did was shift it to Thanksgiving at one point, or New Year's at one point, we've done a couple of different dates over the, we're saying seven years, it's seventeen for me, and other year, we, we discussed fireworks. Because there's, there's something going on, I mean, it's just one of those things, it, it's always, in this environment, it's always a discussion, so. We shifted it around a lot of different dates in the year over the years.
And Joe, I don't know if you heard that amended motion, but it does include, if the situation on the ground warrants canceling them until a later date because it's dry, you know, on July fourth, they would get moved to a later date. Like, we've done, I think Thanksgiving, we've done ski spree, we've done New Year's Eve, we've moved them back. So the motion did include that, I don't know if you heard that or not.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to continue our firework display with the condition that, conditions on the, if the conditions on the ground, as we get closer to the Fourth of July are determined to be unacceptable, then they will be moved. Any further discussion, let's call a question.
Incom no, Golda's no, Gamba yes, Leahy yes, Burhish no, Kopp yes.
Motion fails. All right, what's next?
Hey, John Martin wants to hold the community meeting to talk about fire next Wednesday night.
Fire or homeless?
Homeless slash fire, homeless probably really, but.
Who wants to?
John Martin, Commissioner Martin.
And is he expecting a full commission and full council there, is that what his expectation is, or is it a community meeting, what is his?
It's a community meeting, and I think we are invited.
And which night?
Wednesday night. I haven't heard back from them that it, it's a go, but I figured I should let you guys know.
I, I guess I was hoping we'd have a little more time to prepare and get all the stakeholders in the room.
I did, this is Commissioner Martin, I have limited influence.
Okay, can we suggest an alternate date?
Well, you know, we can always have another meeting at a later date, you know, this is just John's meeting, you know, and if it's something we wanna, just to discuss further with more participants, you know, there's.
And I don't, I don't know, you know, if it will actually happen, but I would go ahead if you're interested in at least tentatively putting down your schedule line here back a month. We, we had a meeting that he came to, I think, yesterday, or the day before, and he just kind of grabbed the date, so.
Okay, and I'll, I will not be here on that date, so I would not like that date, but, because I'd certainly like to be at the meeting, but.
I'll let you know, said I don't, I don't know for sure, but it's coming up.
Okay, thank, thank you.
All I'm saying, June twenty-second is when SEDAT has picked to officially cut the ribbon on the Grand Avenue Bridge. So.
What, what is it?
In the afternoon, June twenty-second, we'll get it, we'll, we'll send you an invite once they're up, but I figured I should, I think I should let you know, so you can hold it in. Should be, we're planning a little party with a little thing on, and she, it's going to be a huge deal, we invited the governor, we don't know if he is coming or not. And I'm gonna try to make sure we invite everyone who's helped us in our delegation and kind of.
June twenty-second is a Sunday? No, that's July, never mind, I'm a month past.
This is a Friday.
Could we invite former council members that had more of a role in it than I did at least?
I will not be here on that Friday, that's my archery shoot.
Well, Todd gets to talk.
What day is this?
Yeah, I just heard you say it.
Todd has all checked out also, wait, wait. This is why you're.
Yes, it's also C M L, it's not a great thing for us either.
On the twin second.
Yep. By the way, have you announced to council that, that we're probably going to just cancel that second meeting in June, which is scheduled for June twenty-first?
I believe it was on the list.
Okay, okay.
Yes, I think we're going to cancel the second meeting in June, because they will not be anymore.
I would, I would support that.
And if, if, if we have really important issues that we gotta discuss, we'll, we'll have a special meeting either before or after that, you know, so, you know, but. And if, if, if we have really important issues that we gotta discuss, we'll ha- hold a special meeting either before or after that, you know, so, you know, but, uh-
Um, we had a reservation on the planning commission, mumbled that, and I think we were gonna kinda do what we did today, is come back and just ask if that one of the alternatives we appointed.
Who are the two alternates on the?
George is the one who's waiting with me the entire time, George Shaver and Ann, Ann Oleson. If that would work, 'cause we were hoping to keep it, not necessarily have someone new appointed in the middle of development code.
Yeah, yeah, I just get one of the alternates.
And the riparian setback issue we discussed at the last, um, workshop about development code, we were hoping to take more time, kind of really evaluate the impacts, and then bring it to you guys, you know, I don't, we don't wanna rush, rush it through without properly analyzing it, 'cause it could have a lot of impacts. So if you guys are okay with that, when you said we'd bring it back in, um, May seventeenth?
I'm not really, I'm not really familiar with this at all, so.
Right, you weren't there, um-
You know, you said that, like, oh, yeah, you know, the other meetings you don't show up to.
I think you were in Washington DC at the time, actually.
Oh, that's right, saving the city, thank you, okay, I don't feel bad in that.
Okay, inside pictures, um, the river commission suggested a fifty-foot, like, riparian setback.
Okay.
And it's definitely an interesting idea, one that we should look into, but I don't think we are ready to make that decision or bring you guys that information, and it could have some significant impacts as far as making certain properties undevolvable.
Okay.
Yeah, and then-
So, I think we just need more time to really analyze it.
I think it's important to know that, it, it was a unanimous recommendation by the River Commission, who holds a lot of expertise, but we need to weigh it from the different sides of the issue, and I think it'll, it'll be good, they are hoping to discuss that, um, when we have a work session with River, which, I think they were talking about maybe the June seventh meeting, I don't know if it can be ready by then, but it wouldn't necessarily have to all be ready by then, and that would be minus a tie-up, moving forward the development code is, is a very long conversation.
I don't, I don't see as one, you don't have to one of these, so.
I think having recommendations from staff, from community development on how it, yeah, how it affects development of parcels, parcels, and, yeah, good.
That's all, okay.
Thanks.
Okay, go on.
Uh, you know, firstly, my whole update comes in.
All right, so, next we have a, uh-
Uh, were we, I'm sorry, we were gonna do, we delayed board's commission reports, I thought, from this morning, and, uh, didn't we have council?
Yeah, that was the last meeting.
No?
Council topics.
Mayor said cancel by the end of this, you were reading some M and Ms and- Oh.
No, we, I mean, we don't, we don't actually have board and commission reports on this particular agenda.
Read it out, sir. All right, nevermind, I thought we skipped something this morning, so we'll just do that.
No, we just, it was just council comments.
Okay.
So, you know, which is different than board and commission.
Angry Birds.
All right, so we have an executive session scheduled on the agenda to discuss the following, Hanging Lake, Garfield County Industrial Development, C dot IGA, the Confluence, and the West Glenwood Mall, is there a motion?
So move.
Nope, that doesn't work.
How come? I, I moved to go into executive session for the purpose of conducting a conference with city manager and the city attorney to discuss the city's purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of a property, determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators, and to conduct the conference with the city attorney to receive legal advice in accordance with CRS twenty-four six forty, four oh two, four A, B, and E, related to the Hanging Lake, Garfield County Industrial Development, C dot IGA, the Confluence, and W-
West Glenwood Mall.
West Glenwood Mall.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go into executive session, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, let's, uh, take a short break while we clear the room.